Good morning, everybody. Thank you for attending our meeting. This is a call to order, and I'll ask for the roll call.
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, yes, Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to introduce Joyce Kilgore. She is from Pinellasco. She is the Director of Religious Instruction at San Antonio del Padua Catholic Church. Ms. Kilgore, if you could come forward.
Thank you, Ms. Kilgore.
Heavenly Father, you who call out the stars by name, have called each one of us here by name to be of service to your people in this place on the earth at this moment in time. Ephatha, Ephatha, open our ears and open our eyes. Give us a discerning spirit to know what is true and right and just. Thank you, God, our Father, for our religious freedom in America that we may gather in this place on this day to ask for your guidance, for your wisdom, just as King Solomon prayed for wisdom. God of our ancestors, Lord of mercy, who by your word has created the universe and in your wisdom gifted mankind to rule over all of creation so that we may administer justice with integrity. Send your wisdom from the glory of the heavenly realm so that we may learn what pleases you and act in accordance of your will. In your will, oh Lord, all are blessed and none are left behind. In your will contentious ways and words are silenced and peace and respect prevail. Make us instruments of peace and wisdom and justice. Maranatha, maranatha. Come, Lord Jesus, amen.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kilgore, for that prayer. Take the roll.
Here. Here. Present.
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 We'll do the pledge allegiance. Gina, could you lead us?
... to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioners, I believe that there's one change to the agenda, which will be at least one change. 9A is going to be taken off the agenda. So are there any other changes or motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner O'Donnell.
There are some additional things I'd like to report on in the Commissioners' report. Do I need to specify what those are?
No, we can just have that as a matter of discussion without any action.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion?
So move Mr. Chairman to approve the agenda as amended.
Second. Call for the vote. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. On to citizens' concerns. Are there any citizens who would like to address the Commission? Mr. Theoky.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning.
Good morning.
I'd just like to plead with the Commission to not take any actions that would further make water a commodity that gets bought and sold in the market, in the marketplace, and that we're not obliged to help any other entities outside the county to help with their future development. Thank you.
Thank you, Neil. I've got several points I'd love to make in rebuttal, but I'll hold off. We're going to have a good debate on the issue, I believe, next meeting. So thank you for that. Is there anybody else? Good morning, Ms. Brady.
I'm Cindy Bradley. I'm the interim CEO at the hospital, and I thought I would just give a brief update on several new providers who are coming to the hospital. Sarah Smith is a new pediatric nurse practitioner who will be helping provide inpatient pediatric coverage. In addition to that, Frances Fatalis is a new nurse practitioner that will be overseeing the wound care program. We have a new nurse practitioner in the hospitalist program, Kim Adler, who will be starting in the next week or two. In addition to that, we're finalizing a contract with an emergency room physician who plans to come in April or May as a permanent full-time physician in the ER. So lots of recruitment, lots of activity, and lots of placements that we're very pleased with. DMV is the accrediting body for the hospital, and they made an unannounced, their visits are always unannounced, but an unannounced visit last week. The clinical portion of the survey went very well. They were extremely complimentary of the hospital and the hospital staff. We did receive some noncompliance recommendations relative to the physical environment, and we will address those and fix them in the next 45 days. So overall, the DMV survey, I think, went very well. That's all that I have to report today unless there are any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Bradley. Appreciate the report. DMV, is that a state agency that comes in and inspects?
It is, actually, it's an international body, and they follow the ISO regulations, and so we are ISO certified. But DMV comes in annually for a survey, and then they survey every three years for accreditation, and they have a deemed status with the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services of the federal government.
Great. Commissioners, are there any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm glad you're filling those positions. Are there any other citizens who would like to address the board, separate from the agenda? If none, then we'll proceed to approval of the January 20, 2015, regular meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Ambro.
I don't have my iPad in front of me, but there's something where we're talking later in the minutes. I don't have it. I think it's page 16, and it says, "Vice Chair Larry Sanchez Says..."
Glad you read the minutes, Commissioner.
I told my wife that everybody's going to think that I'm being too nitpicky, but it was on something kind of important I didn't want to come back later.
Good correction. Are there any others?
I have none. Mr. Chair, motion to approve the minutes of January 20, 2015.
Also, I can, Mr. Chairman.
Call for the vote.
Yes.
Second. Yes. Yes.
Abstain.
Yes. Now, County Manager Archuleta for the presentation recognizing graduates from the New Mexico Edge Program.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, it gives me great pleasure today to introduce the graduating class from the New Mexico Edge classes. Our employees here within Taos County take great pride in their personal and professional development and spend a lot of time and hours traveling to the different New Mexico Edge classes in order to gain these certifications. And so what I'd like to do today, if possible, is go ahead and call each individual up individually, say what their certification is, and then have them take a picture with the Commission so that we can have that for our library. Our first one is Ms. Gina Elam. Gina is an accountant, too, with Taos County, and she has received her certification in public purchasing professional designation. Congratulations. Then in the middle, Gina, come on. Just for the public's information, these employees received their certifications at the New Mexico Association of Counties meeting last week, and their pictures are actually up when they were receiving their certification. So we're just recognizing them here in Taos County. Our second one is Ms. Lupe Martinez, our Deputy Finance Director, and Lupe has received her certification for professional supervisors designation. Congratulations, Lupe. Our next one is Mr. Anthony Mondragon, CPO. He is a GIS technician, too, and Anthony received his certification with public officials designation. Congratulations. Our next one is Ms. Antonia Santi Esteban, CPS. Antonia is our administrative assistant with the Detention Center, and she has received her designation in the Certified Public Supervisors designation. Congratulations. Elsa is our purchasing officer for Taos County, and she received two designations, her Certified Public Officials and her Certified Public Purchasing Professional Designation. Congratulations. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and we had one other one, and I'd just like to recognize her, Ms. Susan Trujillo, our treasurer, who's not with us today, but she also received her Certified Public Supervisory Designation.
Before you guys leave, I just want to thank you again. We know that that training is difficult. They're all gone already, but we do want to thank them because it's a rigorous training, and what they learn comes back to help Taos County run better, and so we're proud of them.
Mr. Chairman, and I just wanted to add, I know that they've all left already to get to work, and so being on the board of the New Mexico Association of Counties, we hear, or I hear, a lot about, you know, the type of staff that we have here at Taos County and through our management and, you know, the hiring, the personnel. We've been able to acquire a tremendous amount of staff, of high-quality staff, very professional staff levels, and they are recognized throughout the state of New Mexico by others in county government. So I really appreciate the fact that we do have that high caliber of county personnel and continue to spread throughout and learn as much as you can and take advantage of the New Mexico Edge classes. They definitely, in the end, they benefit the residents of Taos County.
Thank you, Commissioner. On to Item 8, Presentations, A PowerPoint presentation on the Rio Grande Water Fund by Laura McCarthy, who is the Director of the Conservation Programs, and Kim Kostnik of the New Mexico Forest Industry Association. Good morning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Kim and I are really happy to be here this morning. Are you going to be able to see the visuals?
We actually have it in front of you.
You have it in front of you. Okay, great. Can we go back to the beginning? Is it all right if I do not use the microphone? So this is the... wants to walk out of the house on a June afternoon and see this looming in the mountains in front of you. This is the Lost Conscious Fire on its very first day of ignition, when it burned 40,000 acres in a 14-hour time period. And this is what that fire, which was in the Hamas Mountains, left behind. What was unique about the Lost Conscious Fire was the extent of high severity burn. You can see there's almost nothing left that's green in that area, and from the Lost Conscious Fire, we ended up with 66,000 acres in that condition. And here's what happens when it rains on that kind of a burned area. Hopefully, you can get that to play. Yep, perfect. It should pop up. It's a little lower on the screen and maybe a little to the left. There's a bar that will pop up, or it may just, last time it just started. There we go. Okay. So this is after two afternoons of thunderstorm on the burned area in Cochity and Bland Canyons. The Dixon Apple Orchard is a well-known landmark, and you can see it in the upper right. You can see how the Army Corps of Engineers put up some Jersey barriers in anticipation of about half the volume that actually occurred. It's what's known as a debris flow, and it's what happens when rain falls on a large watershed that's been severely burned. So there's nowhere for the water and ash to go but downhill, and in this case, it flowed directly into the Rio Grande. Okay, I think if you press Escape, it will end, and then I can advance it. So this is some of the images from after that. You can see the property destruction, and in the lower right is the confluence of that canyon with the Rio Grande, and there is a sediment plug that you're looking at that is estimated by the Army Corps of Engineers to be 70 feet deep. So you have mass movement of soil, ash, and material out of the mountains down into the valley. This is why we're concerned. In this case, Cochity is just above, Cochity Canyon and Bland Canyons are just above the Cochity Reservoir. This is an image of the reservoir the next day, and the images of water quality are not from the reservoir, they're from the Hamas River, same fire, same time period, but other side of that fire event. Our fourth concern, then, is about the cost. The Lost Conscious Fire cost $48 million in direct suppression money, but that is excluding all the costs to the economy that have to be borne by all sectors of our state. And so the University of New Mexico did a study for us, looking at the full costs of Lost Conscious, including all kinds of things like lost business days because they had to be shuttered, decreased tourism revenue because of images shown on TV that caused people to go elsewhere, healthcare costs, costs of evacuating livestock, and you can see that the price tag is considerably higher. If we had that amount of money to invest in a solution proactively, we would be in a very different place. So what is that solution? We know of four scientifically developed strategies to address this challenge of severe wildfire. They are tree thinning, stream restoration, flood mitigation, and fire management. And we also know that all four of those strategies are currently in use in New Mexico. However, it's at a very small scale, and if we want to address the challenge of wildfire that burns 40,000 acres in 14 hours, we need to scale up our solutions, and that's what the Rio Grande Water Fund is about. Now, this map, I just want to briefly explain it. You can see that it basically goes from Belen north along the Rio Grande Corridor. It picks up the Rio Chama because of the San Juan Chama water. Does not go into Colorado, except for in that little headwater area. We have a model to put a solution into place called the Latin America Water Fund Model. There are 12 water funds in Latin America. The first one was developed in Quito, Ecuador. The mechanism is really pretty simple. The downstream water users, through their municipal water district and through corporations like Coca-Cola and breweries that need clean water to make their product, invested in a fund. The fund is used to pay farmers upstream whose management practices were having an impact on water quality. So farmers benefit and residents who need clean water benefit. We have tested this model in the U.S., in Santa Fe, in a very small-scale project, and other cities have also been using similar models and making substantive investments because of the impacts that they have already faced. We have a whole set of very diverse stakeholders working on this, and we've been working together for two years. I'll just quickly run through them. They are the major water users downstream, county commissions such as yourself, New Mexico Association of Counties as well, a whole set of federal agencies, the state water agencies, and the state forest and land agencies, the business community, particularly down in Albuquerque, but also statewide through the Association of Commerce and Industry, universities that have tremendous resources, the ASECIA Association, Pueblos, the Soil and Water Conservation Districts, a private group, the New Mexico Watershed, all of a sudden, blanking, Watershed and Dam Owners Coalition that has the distinction of having made donations to the Rio Grande Water Fund two years running, representing 25% of their operating budget, a committed bunch, the National Labs, more expertise, the traditional conservation and recreation advocacy groups, corporations with sustainability programs that have already invested in this, the Department of Insurance, the legislature, agricultural users, private lands represented in this case through a private land association, the Land Grant Council, and youth organizations. Broad stakeholder effort to come together around a proposed solution. We've done a few studies. I will cover them very, very briefly. They're intended to help prioritize the effort. What's notable is who's been funding the studies. You can see this is a broad list. There are some counties that have contributed, also the federal agencies, state agencies, and water users themselves. This is one of the interesting studies. You can see where Taos is on that map, just for orientation. On the left, the yellow is Ponderosa Pine Forest, and the green is Dry Mixed Conifer. We've excluded lands in wilderness, so that's why there is some blank around the Taos area. And on the right is a results of a modeling exercise, looking at probability that the forest will burn, and if it burns, what is the probability of a debris flow like the one you saw in the video. So you can see that the west slope of the Sangres are at very high risk. We've delved into this in more detail with the U.S. Geological Survey to make sure that it's scientifically a rigorous analysis. This has been published for the east mountains, and now we're comparing the publication outcome to the rapid assessment that I showed you in the previous slide to determine if we need to keep investing in complicated studies or if the rapid assessment is actually almost as good as the $100,000 study. We have looked in addition at watershed response to thinning. This is a work in progress, but you can see from these images that on the left, when you have an overgrown forest, your snow is getting caught up in the treetops where it is exposed to wind and sun, and then it never enters our water cycle. Whereas if you open the forest up, the snow can reach the ground. It's partially shaded into the spring, and it creates a robust snowpack. In fact, this is likely how our forests functioned in terms of a watershed benefit historically, but we've altered that condition by having too many trees in the forest. And then if we burn it off, we have a different problem, which is that everything's exposed to wind and sun all winter long, and so by the time you get to snowmelt, you have a substantially diminished snowpack. Kim?
Thank you, Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Kim Kostelnek, and I'm here representing the forest industry, and I just wanted to talk about what we are going to be taking out of the woods and what are our traditional uses for that particular material. We can't just cut it and leave it in the woods. What we will be doing at that point in time is, instead of having a vertical fuel loading, we'll have a horizontal fuel loading, so we need to remove it. And some of the uses that we normally have been doing is the lumber in the southwest construction, which is something that Taos is very familiar with. We have the shavings, post and pole operations, and mulch and compost. What we are thinking that we're going to have to do with our small diameter, because we have so many trees, they're all small and little, and they really have a reduced value to them, is that, okay, we might try the biofuels, but that's at a beta stage, and so it's not necessarily right there, ready to go. Electricity is a very biomass utilization through electricity is a very on the table, ready to be assembled, as well as utilizing all of the tree for thermal heating and cooling. So those are the uses that we... Which way? Nope. What did I do? Turn it off on you?
You might have.
I apologize.
That's okay. It's the same.
Okay. Okay. So by doing all of this, we are creating jobs, and jobs not only in the, on the primary and secondary uses of this material, but also in the inwoods processing of this material. We actually have, is that the firewood for cell? We've got a lot of really unique individuals out there who have... We've got a lot of really unique individuals out there who are utilizing their creativity and trying to let people know that this wood that they're going to be burning is good for the environment. It's not bad for the environment. They've got firewood out there for local use, and it is helping the watershed and helping us be able to create our economic value. Want to go ahead and do the plan?
Okay. Have a couple slides that show you the outcomes of the two-year planning process by the advisory board on that stakeholder group list with all the partners. This is a map we created that shows the Rio Grande Water Fund area outlined in black, but it is statewide coverage, and it's a combination of GIS data layers about wildfire risk, threats to water supplies, economic opportunity, especially on the wood use side and on the recreation side, forest health, that is, dead trees that are out there because of insects and disease, and then important fish and wildlife habitat. And again, you can see that the area around Taos is among the highest-risk areas in the state. You already knew that, I think, but here it is statewide. Then we took the water fund area and we divided it into four focal areas. The focal area on the right is what we call, are calling, the west slope of the Sangre de Cristo. And the rest of our presentation is going to focus on what we hope will happen in this focal area and the reason that we're here today. There's already an incredible foundation of work that's been completed by your CWPP core team with the plan that was done in 2009, and now the plan to revise that and update it. You have incredible response to the Firewise Community Program. You have communities coming together with state forestry to apply for the non-federal lands grants, and Mark Schutz will talk about that. I think he's HC on the agenda. And then you have regional water planning going on right now. So this is an incredible foundation for this area to be able to be a recipient of Rio Grande Water Fund dollars, to leverage the existing investment by all kinds of agencies and organizations. And we're here today because we think this is an incredible opportunity, and we hope that the county commission will consider supporting it and, you know, investing in these planning processes through your staff and contractors, and making sure that the west slope of the Sangre focal area is competitive for funding against the other parts of the water fund area, which I didn't tick off, but they are the east mountains outside of Albuquerque, the Hamas Mountains, and then the San Juan Chama headwaters. Briefly, I want to show something that connects the downstream water user into the funding stream. So this is a study that was done by the University of New Mexico last year. Oh, that's blank. All right. Well, what it shows is the results of two surveys, one that was done in Santa Fe in 2011, one that was done in Albuquerque in 2013. They asked, both of them asked the water users, the ratepayers, if they would be willing to pay through their water utility for restoration of the forest that supplies their water. In other words, a program of water source protection. And the numbers are overwhelming. We had, in both cases, 80% support for payments of around $1 per month. If you think about the number of water users downstream on the Rio Grande, that is an incredible potential source of revenue. It is not developed at this point at all. There are no proposals in front of anyone to actually do this, but it is important information for elected officials to hear about. We also asked them who should collect the funds. I guess the slide is showing. And the answers were split between water utilities and the state. And we asked them, what is the best structure? And the answers were either independent or a collaboration.
So we have been discussing this with our legislators on a statewide basis, and what we have done is present in front of the Water and Natural Resource interim committee. And we've been doing this for about a year. And this last November, they decided to go ahead and accept, well, they actually, let me back up a little bit. Last year during the session, there was two bills that unanimously in House and Senate that said that they wanted us to figure out how to create a long-term funding source for watershed treatments, restoration work. And so that was our charge, and that's what we went out and we pulled a committee together of state agencies, federal agencies, and stakeholders who were trying to figure out, how can we develop this fund and how should it be managed? So the bottom line on that was that they decided that we should work with one of our best partners, which is the Department of Insurance, believe it or not. Our superintendent of insurance and the insurance companies are advocates for getting the watershed work done, because they realize that their insurance rates were going to have to go up because of all of the claims they were receiving, not only on fire, but on the flooding after the fire. So they thought being proactive was a lot cheaper than waiting for it to happen and react to the situation. So we came up, this is the memorial. And so we came up with a way to fund it, and we have found sponsors, legislators who were just, were ready to go. And Representative Bandy has submitted, or created HB 38, and co-sponsored by Senator Worth. And right now, we have already, we have gone through the AG, they changed the name of it, the AG and Water and Wildlife Committee, and they have unanimously got a due pass out of that. And we are now headed into energy and environment. So our whole point is to create a fund out of the premium, or the premium tax fund that is now being a little bit freed up because of the Affordable Care Act. And we have the ability to become part of that fund, which was the idea of the insurance companies, and with the superintendent of insurance saying that we might have the ability to do it that way. There's some issues with this bill, but we're working through them. We're working collaboratively with the people who have issues, and we are making, we're collaborating to make it right for everybody. Our whole point is not, not to affect other users of the fund, but as to try to create a long-term fund. Now, the reason why we know we have to have a long-term fund is that private industry will come in, our contractors will come in, and if they know that they're going to have the ability to have a supply, you know, down the line, a 10-year supply. What we're doing now is on a year-to-year basis. And they're not going to, they can't afford to go out and invest what they need to invest in, if they don't know if there's going to be the ability to have work later on throughout the years. So having a knowledge of a long-term funding source, knowing that we have the ability to get out there and do the work that we need to do, these guys will make their own investments. And they will have the ability to keep their economics going so that we can get these huge, this is a huge job, and nobody alone can do it. We all know that, all of us are in this together.
This is the summation slide here, just to kind of wrap it up and tell you where we are at. So we have this advisory board with its working groups. We have watershed studies underway. We've completed the comprehensive plan. We've launched the Rio Grande Water Fund as an entity. We have HB 38 in process. We are transitioning into formal governance through a charter and an executive committee comprised of charter signatory organizations. We have some counties as charter members, and it would be fantastic if the Taos County Commission would consider becoming a signatory to the Rio Grande Water Fund through that charter. We have a request for statements of intent out on the street right now. It's due back on February 23rd, and I believe there will be some applications from this area. The purpose of that is to create a candidate list modeled after the way the public schools have their capital outlay process of being open and transparent about what the list of projects looks like, and then being funded off of that list, and after your project, you know, after your school is built, any new things you have, you move to the bottom. This has never been done before in the forest and watershed restoration sector, but what we hear from all the stakeholders is that an open and transparent process about where the money goes, how it's prioritized, is very necessary. It's part of creating certainty for residents and for industry. And then as money comes in, then money goes out. That's what we call the matchmaking process. So this is kind of a stark image, but this is, in essence, what we're looking at for the future. If we don't scale up while we still have an opportunity, while our forests are still green. Thank you so much for inviting us here today. We really appreciate it, and if there's time, we can answer any questions.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Romero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What is the amount of money that you're hoping to raise?
For the Rio Grande Water Fund area, we've done an assessment of need and pinned it at $21 million per year for 20 years to scale up to 30,000 acres per year, or 600,000 acres. Now, $6 million of that is consistently coming in from the U.S. Forest Service through their federal appropriations, and that amount may increase because of advocacy by this stakeholder group. So it leaves a gap of $15 million for the Rio Grande Water Fund area. There's also been a statewide analysis, and the statewide funding gap was identified at $61 million.
And so, you know, we've been fortunate in northern New Mexico, Taos County, that we haven't had the massive fires, and probably, I think it's been maybe 10 years that we've had one. How can we be guaranteed that this fund will, in fact, come to northern New Mexico first? You know, typically, at the state level, everything goes south of Albuquerque, or it stays in Albuquerque.
That's okay. South of 40 feels the same way about northern New Mexico. So, excuse me. But that's why we have a candidate list, so that we, everybody, and everybody has to be within, meet a specific criteria. And the criteria, are you in a, you know, a high danger, you saw the maps, all of that has to be. So that's how we wanted the open, transparent transparency of it.
And if I may add, the investment that's being made now in the community wildfire protection planning process is also critical, because it demonstrates that investing in Taos County is a good investment because of all the planning work and collaboration that has been done.
How would you plan to use the public, the residents of the county of northern New Mexico, to collaborate with this and to work with this and to be able to allow them to continue taking out wood in areas? As you know, many of our people still depend on this for a primary source of heating, but also there are a lot of folks who depend on the gathering of wood in order to make a living. So what would be your plan to incorporate all of that into this?
One of the things is that each project that comes to the Rio Grande Water Fund, or if it's on a statewide basis, in that project specific, they would need to have a component that would explain to us how they were going to go about collaborating with the public, opening it up, the utilization of the material that's being removed, et cetera. So all of that information has to be there.
And that would include Asequia Systems as well?
Yes, sir. I mean, everything, you know, it depends. On a really good project, you're going to have a good collaborative, which Taos County does have. And they've got the entities that are the users of the forest, as well as the recreators, if you will. So both, everybody that's in this area should be able to have an input into their specific projects. And that's what we'd be reading when we would be reviewing these proposals and knowing that this is a good project because of the collaboration that's going forward.
And if I may quickly add to that response, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, we have 22 signatories already to the Rio Grande Water Fund, and they include the Land Grant Council, the Land Grant Consejo, and the New Mexico Association of, or Asequias Association. I'll just leave it at that.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Fambro.
If I could put you on the spot, Ray. Ray Correll in the back. Your biggest problem areas, are they within this area?
Basically, what would get us our biggest bang for our buck out of this, if you would? Right now, we're looking at everything on my zone, which consists of Cuesta and the Cuesta Ranger District and the Camino Real Ranger District. Would be, basically, the Gaiita Canyon, Tertemills areas are high concern, coming down, skipping over the Pueblo, although the Pueblo was there, they collaborated with us very well yesterday, they have a plan in place. And then starting from the ridge on the Pueblo side, abutting of the Forest Service in Taos Canyon, and taking it almost all the way down to, almost all the way down to 518, not quite, where it cuts back across through Teres Pitos. So yes, it's all within the area of our protection, and quite frankly, one area that I'm very concerned about.
Thank you.
Steve? Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, just a quick question. You guys actually, in talking about the water bills and, you know, adding a dollar to those water bills, what work have you done? Because where your survey was done, which is Santa Fe and Albuquerque, they both have water authorities. In Taos County and all, most northern New Mexico communities, we actually have mutual domestics that are run individually within those communities. How would you work with them? How would you do that? And maybe even Commissioner Romero could add a little bit to that, because it also would add more administrative costs to their billing process and accounting process in order to do that. And has any of that been discussed or met with the mutual domestics?
It has not been discussed. We have the Rural Water Users Association as one of the partners on the advisory board. The point of that information was more to demonstrate that the downstream water users who depend upon Rio Grande native water, as well as San Juan Chama water, are potential players in funding the solution. And they're bigger, so they can support that kind of contribution perhaps more readily than a mutual domestic or a small-town water utility.
And so, Mr. Chairman and staff, what do we need to do today in order to support this?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is just a presentation today. Staff can go ahead and pull House Bill 38, do a bill analysis of that and get back to the commission. If the commission at that point would like to do a letter of support to join this group, we could put that in an agenda item for discussion and consideration.
Thank you for the presentation. Really, you know, it's obvious those dark red areas within Taos County need to be thinned. I mean, we have to find a solution. Really appreciate both the industry's work and Rio Grande Water Fund's work, and concerning yourselves with it and coming up with a plan. And also appreciate the fact that you recognize that there's a lot of collaboration already in Taos County that, when coupled with our dangers, should put us in good stead for future funding. But I know that all of us up here are just wondering, okay, so how are we going to do this? You know, and is it going to be in the form of a grant application? And, and, uh, is it going to be in the form of a grant application, do you think?
It'll be in the form of a proposal, yes, sir. And it's a grant-type application.
And, and then there'll be requests for a proposal from, uh, people in the industry, either locally or not-so-locally, to utilize the, the product of the thinning?
Um, in, in the proposal itself, I would, I would really like to be, make, make sure that whoever is submitting that proposal has worked with the county, you know, the industry, and they have a plan on how they are going to... You know your area.
Right.
You're, you're, you know more than any of us. So, the collaboration that you've got going with industry, hanging out with, uh, the fire guys and all that stuff, yeah, that's the most important thing, is having that already figured out, how you're going to do it, or having a good idea of it. A lot of things change, gotta be flexible, but that, that part is important as well. And I, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to mention that the House Bill, um, 38 is in flux at this point. There's going to be some amendments on it, and I would definitely like to make sure that Mr. Archuleta gets the, the amended portion of it as, instead of just the one that we've got going out there right now.
Appreciate that. Do you have any idea what a timeline might be for, uh, applications for the funding?
We, we have right now that request for, uh, interest. And so, if you would like to be able to put that in, and, and it's got a very short deadline of February 23rd. So, it, just knowing that you're out there and have a, a project in mind, that's, that's very important. And we can, and make sure that we get you on a list. That's also important. But that's, also, it's going to be out there years to come. We're hoping that years to come, we are, it's going to take us a long time to get this accomplished, but we'd like to get started as well. Where, it's time to take action. It is no longer time to talk.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Nathan's in the room, so we'll have him make sure that he follows up on that, gets his name on the list, and then I'll also want to give him my cards, so we could get, uh, Senate Bill, House Bill 38.
The, the request for interest, does that have to be, uh, how, how complicated does that have to be?
That's what yesterday's meeting was about, um, with Forest Service, State Forestry, Taos Pueblo, um, Firewise, CWPP County, all in the room, coming up with a plan, dividing up a task list, you know, we've, we've got it kind of all sketched out from now till the 23rd, to get one or more applications in, uh, from Taos County. And it is a short timeframe, so I'm sure there's some process that involves, um, the county commission, um, in there, but that's Nathan's area of expertise.
And do we know who would be charged with trying to put it together at this point?
Yeah. Take the lead, kind of as the applicant, and we're kind of doing a proactive effort with the Pueblo, uh, different agencies.
Well, if you could get a... This meeting, that would be something for us to look at. Appreciate it.
Definitely.
Great. Thank you for that. Well, thank you to staff, and thank you so much for making this presentation. It's, uh, really a critical issue.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for the opportunity. We appreciate it.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the RSI, I'm guessing, needs to be, uh, brought back and signed before the 23rd, and can you give us an idea of what financial amount you're wanting the county to participate?
That doesn't need to be spelled out in the proposal. This, it's more like a pre-proposal to get on a list, and then the matchmaking process happens, and then you work out the actual funding details. Now, the county's investment to date can count as leverage, and should be definitely portrayed in the application, the pre-application, if you will, so that, um, it's clear that the county has, um, to use a phrase, skin in the game.
Thank you. This is a monumental task.
No money changing hands yet, but it's important for Taos County to show that we're part of the process. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Onto 8B. This is a, uh, presentation requesting a letter of support for the Celebración de Cultura, excuse my accent, for a grant from the Northern New Mexico National Heritage Area, and this is Jean Nichols, who I don't see.
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, Commissioner.
I would like to present this, if I may.
Please do.
Um, this is a, um, event scheduled for June 12th through the 14th, and is to display and celebrate the broad heritage and the deep history, cultural richness, richness and diversity of both the community and natural landscape. And it is taking place in Pinellasco in various locations. It'll start off with, as you can see on this flyer, with a dance, and there will be, um, demonstrations. This also is to help, uh, promote economic development in the Pinellasco area. Um, and this is a letter of support to the National Heritage Group. They are seeking funds from that group, and I would request and set a motion that we, um, give them a letter of support.
Mr. Chairman, uh, just a letter of support, is it, is all they're asking for at this time?
Yes.
And what is the amount of money that they're requesting from the, uh, foundation?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Romero, I believe it's $3,000.
Mr. Chairman, um, I know through our lodger's tax that we also have monies available that we can tap into, and I don't know if our county clerk could maybe advise on whether or not it's too late to apply. Okay.
And then those applications are based on receipts for, um, advertising, right? So, I'm not sure that that would dovetail with this.
Potentially, it's, it's got a possibility.
If there's expenditures to advertise the event, then those can be reimbursed through lodger's tax.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, they have been informed of the lodger's tax, and, um, I'd be happy to be a go-between for them to see if they do want advertising dollars.
So, you would like, uh, Commissioner O'Donnell, a motion then, uh, in support?
Yes, I believe I did set the motion, and, and looking for a second.
Okay, I'll go ahead and second, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Then we'll call for the vote.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Mr. Chair. I guess I may be a little confused. We're, are we just agreeing for a, to go ahead and, and give direction to our manager to go ahead and pass, to go ahead and give a letter of support? Or are we making, taking an action item on this, because it's a presentation right now? So, I think, you know, I think if, if the commission's in favor of providing a letter of support, we can give direction to our, our manager to go ahead and write that letter of support, I believe. I'm not, I, is that the way I think it should be handled at this time? I know that there must be a motion or second, but because it's not an action item, I'm just concerned that we're not, we, we don't want to be taking action on a presentation.
I think that we could take a vote that would, uh, give instruction. We could probably have, have done it informally too, as you say, but since we've already started the process, then, um, then, uh, I, I say we go ahead and finish the vote.
Oh, sure. Okay. Well, then, I appreciate that, Mr. Chair. Yes?
Yes.
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 Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I hope it's a good event, and, uh, maybe some of us will get a chance to get out there. Now, 8C, we're going to go back to some fire issues here. Um, it's good that we have everybody here today, so we can learn a little bit more about this. Mark, we know you've done some great work. Uh, why don't you tell us what's going on with, uh, watershed dynamics?
Uh, Mr. Chair, thank you for this opportunity, Commissioners, county staff. Uh, my name's Mark Schutz. I'm a member of the county, uh, the County Community Wildfire Protection Plan Corps Team, the CWPP. Um, I think, uh, you, you got a handout this morning, uh, the comprehensive land use plan adopted in '04. That's the land and water portion there, which I think was adopted in perhaps '04 by this body, uh, which set the corps team in motion, uh, which was later, later, actually, uh, the CWPP was drafted and, and adopted in, in 2009. Um, the presentation I want to make today is, touches on exactly what Laura McCarthy just presented with, has to do with quality of life, dependable water supplies and forest health, and the relationship of those. Um, and, and of course, work, workforce development. We're going to talk about resiliency. This, uh, is, your device goes with, it's, it goes here? I can't use it, though. You've got it, right. Um, thank you, Anissa. First, I really want to give a big nod of appreciation to county staff. In the last four or five years, maybe it's because I'm in my 50s now, for some reason I find myself at county so frequently, be it the assessor's office or planning, working with Anita, uh, in grants administration and so forth. And universally, I think they've probably mistaken me for a, a visiting dignitary by how I'm treated here. I, I, I look around, every, every time I come, they, folks try and help you. Um, it's, it's, the level of kindness is extraordinary. I, every time I walk out of the building, I'm always astounded, and I notice I have a big smile on my face. And I was mentioning, mentioning to, um, Darlene, uh, who, your just retired county assessor, if you heal, the other day, I said, perhaps it's because of the idea of rodita, and I hope I have the definition of that term right, where, uh, folks in Taos look out for you. They look out for each other. And I, I think back to, uh, my own upbringing, and we never, my dad never passed anybody on the side of the road. Uh, and, and I'm really honored to be part of that, and I, I just wanted to be, give a big nod of appreciation to the county for, uh, staff for being extraordinary in their jobs continually. Um, so, this is my rodita, if I, if I may, is a contribution, and I often feel I need to explain myself because I make a living in the same fields that I, uh, advocate for publicly, so the question of conflict of interest does arise. Um, I keep separate from that in that I never have anything to do with procurement. That's why I resigned from the Soil and Water Board, because I was having to abstain from too many votes and leave the room, and I, I now have a policy that if you have to abstain from very many votes, you probably shouldn't, I don't mean to recommend to you, but I decided for myself, I shouldn't be on that board. So, I really support Soil and Water, and I miss it, but that's why I can't participate there. Um, so, uh, I hope that's clear, and if there's ever any questions, I hope folks will come straight to me and ask. Um, I want to talk today about two fledgling industries, one of them agricultural restoration, and one of them forestry restoration, which are closely related. Um, let's see, we'll tie all this together here. It's really about water infiltration. Um, let's click a slide or two, if we could, Anissa, and see. Um, you see the mountains in the background covered with snow. The, this field is in the watershed of the Rio Fernando, and it's, it was desert with, uh, prairie dogs, and this is a replant, and let's go ahead and tick again. Thank you. Of course, this water's surface runoff from the High Country, and we're counting on it being stable, not like the terrible film that we watched. Every time I watched that, it, my, I, tears come to my eyes, because I know what we're losing in terms of potential from the High Country. Go ahead, uh, Anissa, thank you. This becomes, in the lowlands, an infiltration gallery, or an infiltration zone, if you will. And there's a misunderstanding that alfalfa and agriculture really requires a lot of water. It's actually, it uses water when there's a surplus, but there's a, an infiltration that occurs. This watershed frequently doesn't even have water till after June, but it'll often give a second cut, because the land absorbs the rain. And studies have shown around Aseca irrigation that as much as 60 to 70% of the water is returned to the rivers for use further downstream. So, when we think about our fields that are green like this, that infiltrate water, rather than bare, like the foreground there, that evaporate water, they too serve to contribute to the overall watershed health. Go ahead, Anissa, thank you. And then, here we go. Um, productivity, uh, job opportunities, cattle are really worth something the last couple of years, which is a real blessing, and, um, we, I just want to tell you a little bit about my little industry to give you an idea of where these two fledgling industries might grow. Um, we spent a little better than 60,000 in payroll this last year, an enormous year for me. We thinned my companies, I have two, one for the valley and one for the High Country. We thinned 60 acres in the wild and urban interface, okay, working off of grants and with Soil and Water Conservation District on bid jobs. And then we restored, replanted 60 acres in the valley. Additionally, so that comes out to about 120 acres, about 2,000 an acre, if you look at that, but we also care took a lot of land that was already reestablished. So, uh, fence maintenance, irrigation, hay cutting, and so forth is also in those dollars. So, those are dollars that went into the economy and had a ripple effect through our community, but they were almost all restoration-based. And I think you get the sense of the challenge that the Rio Grande Water Fund is facing, because unlike industries of the past, uh, we'll take logging, for example, which I want to say I, I hope is an industry of the future, too. When you had a product to sell, it was clear and easy where the profit was going to be. When you have something, it's a little, you, you have to explain it when you're talking about using a, a land base, or helping a land base do the thing it does naturally in terms of infiltrate water into the aquifer, and then contribute to the downstream flow, to the benefit of economy and quality of life in our state. Let's go ahead, Anissa, thank you. I'm going to say the term pulse grazing, so it starts to get some traction. It's a way to manage our lowlands that builds top soil and generates, uh, the ability, re, re, assist the land in its ability to infiltrate water. Go ahead, please. So, this is, um, a resilient forest stand. This was thinned about eight years ago. You can see the grass coming back between the trees. Um, this was thick, you couldn't walk between this area. This is a Soil and Water Conservation District job. Um, let's go ahead. This is, okay, the one you just looked at was the, uh, the frame you just looked at was the, um, Resolana, uh, this is the sombrillo, the shady side. So, you see the difference in the timber productivity, much bigger trees, uh, much shadier. You can see the sun's just glancing over the landscape. This forest is very unlikely to burn, as was in the previous frame, because a fire lights, it'll run through underneath like fire did historically. That's the, what we're trying to regenerate. Fire itself, obviously, isn't bad. It can be a forest, forest maintenance tool, but it's impossible to light fires in a thicket. Let's go ahead, Anissa. So, you, obviously, you can't light a fire there. That area will soon look like one of the two slides you just saw. Forest thinning at work. Let's back up, take it all in. One, one back? Uh, one forward, I'm sorry. Thank you. Um, sublimation, Laura touched on this, when, when snow lands on the crowns of a thicket like that, it generally just evaporates back. So, the forest thinning crews sort that out. Um, Commissioner Romero, I want to take this opportunity to talk about the resources you were talking about. Obviously, there's a lot of, there's posts and fuel wood. Our traditional uses locally depend on accessibility, and it's really site-specific. So, some areas that forest thinning, if you're, your projects end up in watersheds, and some of those areas are inaccessible, no roads, we, and, and there'll be a slide about that we'll come to, but in a case like this, which is accessible, this landowner could benefit from this firewood, so they came and collected and gave it to relatives. And so, there's a, what it does is render a stagnant, um, imperiled resource into a useful stage. That's what your thinning crews will do for you once these grants go into action. People are pretty, I think our gente are generally pretty comfortable with coming and certainly cutting the trees, but if there's wood down and, and rendered to size and limbed, and the slash has been burned, that's what happens, is the slash gets burned from these areas. That's easy to get firewood, and the Forest Service, to their credit, has a lot of fuel wood gathering areas that are a result of thinning projects. Again, please. That's what we're all working for. This picture, again, looking into the Rio Fernando drainage, and I'm going to come to the NFL grant and talk about some specifics there. Um, this is late-season water. You can't see it, but right behind those sunflowers and behind that Siberian elm tree is the water tower for the mutual domestic there in Cunyón. So, the beneficiaries of upstream stewardship is directly related to downstream agriculture. Okay? In Sabato Fire, first day, July 4th, uh, 90, '03, '03. That fire burned for several weeks. It burned all the way over until it was threatening Taos Canyon. The flood damage in, at the Pueblo cost tens, if not hundreds, I'm sorry, I don't have the exact numbers, of thousands of dollars of mitigation. There was huge flood flow. Renee Romero yesterday said the river wasn't the same for five years. Rene Romero yesterday said the river wasn't the same for five years. Go ahead, from another view. So, we've had our fires here, go ahead. This is a photograph from the Hondo Fire of '96, credit to Ron Gardner. Oh, pause, I need to give a credit, I'm so grateful, Beverly Haldeman's in the room and my girlfriend Lisa Seacrest both did a lot of technical work to get these slides up, so I really want to give a mention to them. And this is Ron Gardner, and thanks to Greg Miller, the watershed health administrator at the Carson National Forest, but this is what happens to your water courses once the fire flow and the sheet flow happens after the fires have taken off the stability of the landscape. This watershed is incised, it's not in touch with its floodplain, it doesn't have the ability to absorb the surplus water anymore, and so what you get is a flash, flashy watershed that you don't have runoff in July and August like you need to support your asequias and to infiltrating to the ground to support your aquifers. We'll go ahead, please. The log probably shows more or less where the stream bed used to be, so.
Mark, roll, real quick, you mentioned the Pueblo official that spoke about the river, Pueblo, not being the same for
Yes, sir.
Five years. What were some of the occurrences?
The, after the fire in the Pueblo, and I'm only, you know, at arm's length aware of those, so I'll give a general sharing. All of that mud and topsoil and detritus, which is really soil building material, and ash flooded into the edge of the village, and I know Norbert Vehill Construction had to go there with excavators and create dams, check dams to catch all of that. And then, of course, there was overflow whenever there was surplus water that went into the Rio Pueblo, so it added what I think they're called TDLs, total dissolved solids into the river, which is detrimental to the fish. I know this, this particular fire killed all the fish in the Rio Grande during the, when the ash flow hit the, down King Diamond Gaiña Canyon and Garapata Canyon, yeah. So, does that sum it up pretty much? Dirt and ash right into the residential areas, and the ability of the landscape to retain and infiltrate water was, is incredibly compromised, so it's better in five years, it's cleaner because of the regrowth of the pioneer plants, aspen and oak and so forth. Watersheds do three things, if they're in healthy condition, they intercept or capture, they store, and they release. So, for the watersheds to function well in that way, the vegetation there has to be well-balanced on the landscape, okay? Go ahead, Anisa. This is, this is a shot from Flag Mountain looking down towards San Cristobal. I like to always give a nod of compassion for Mr. Silva, who inadvertently ignited this fire. I think he gets way more blame than is due because it was really the condition of the forest that led to this burn. If the forest had been in the condition it had been in 120 years before this, that would have been a ground fire that burned through and cleaned the underneath of the forest. It's entirely the condition of the forest that contributes to fires of this scale at elevations from 8,000 to 10,000 feet. On, please. Looking again at collapsed landscape there in, from the Hondo Fire, same as the photograph before, go ahead. Here, you see the tree density, this is another problem with so many trees in the forest, is you have all those straws drinking out of one cup. So, we have limited precipitation here, and again, vegetation balanced with the available moisture means historically, there would be 12 to 15 trees per acre. Now, we have as many as 2,000. It's also a resource, you see a lot of small vigas there that could be used for poles and whatnot, I mean, there's potential, but that's part of why the forest burns so hot, is you get a dry spell, all the trees are trying to drink the limited water, and the landscape is incredibly crispy dry. In fact, they say that green trees will be drier than cured firewood. So, when a fire hits them, they go, all right? Sample of a thicket, I put this up to talk about sublimation, but we've covered that. This is actually in the riparian zone in El Salto, which is another concern, but I won't go there, except for to say that is the next project at the Pueblo, is that they're going to work on their riparian zone, that came up yesterday. This is a healthy forest fire, this is set on purpose, this is Forest Guild working, I think the Moreno Valley. Gives you an example of how fire can be a friend to the forest. This is historically how it traveled, on the grass underneath, cleans up underneath, but this was thinned first for this to be possible. So, over time, we don't have to continue to maintain the forest, we can initiate the natural processes. Go ahead. This is, okay, so now we're to the NFL, which 2011 NFL grant was drafted in collaboration with Planning Department, Nathan Vehill at the head of that. The group all pitched together, identified Taos Canyon as a focal area. The reasons focal area identification have to do with communities at risk identification, which is part of the CWPP. It also has to do with eligibility. So, NFL, which stands for non-federal land grant, arises from, it's federal money that's channeled through state forestry to local governments, that's a relevant point in this case. So, Taos County, in its wisdom, in 2011, applied for an NFL grant to state forestry and was granted that grant. It was administered by Anita, who's here, thank you, Anita. And that grant treated, created three cross-canyon fuel breaks, which Ray is in the room too, recommended to take place in Taos Canyon, identified as the focal area. And the point of those is that those fuel breaks on private land go all the way to the 64 and then touch the work that's been done on federal land. There's been a couple of previous grants, John Otis working through the Sustained House, I think, you'll remember John, and he had a lot to do with the Rio Fernando Neighborhood Association. So, they did two grants previous on federal land to insulate the federal land from fire igniting on the private side and vice versa. And so, these grants created Hs, if you will, so those were sidewalls in the canyon, those thinning grants, and then these, the NFL created three more, one at Sierra Campground, the first one, one at Shady Brook, and another one at Mondragon Canyon, further up. So, the way Ray describes this, the functionality of this, and you can see the open space between the trees, there's no way it can carry a crown fire, we'll have a picture of a crown fire coming up here in a minute. So, what Ray said he would do, if a fire was coming at these areas, they'd go in first and turn it black, right? They're going to burn the underneath, because there's still, there's still fuel scattered in there, there's needles and accumulation, and if it's three years from now, there'll be oakery growth and grass. And then, he said, if it's not too dangerous, the fire crew will stay there. And the point of that is that there's firebrands that'll throw over the top of a fuel break, and then his crew would go and quash those. Do I have that more or less accurate, Ray? General? So, that's the purpose of these fuel breaks. Now, Taos County sponsored that, Soil and Water District filled the role of technical service, their forester Kurt Swerengen helped identify the landowners, then we, the landowners were all already identified in general, the areas were identified and the big landowners were identified before the grant was submitted, they were incorporated, but Kurt had to flesh it out because he had to fill out 124 acres, plus use GPS to mark the boundaries to measure acre-jacqually and mark trees, okay? So, and then contractors were hired, and the way that was done, Mike Trujillo with, I think it's Community Development at that time, Mike Trujillo recommended that in order to fulfill the grant in the best way and address the question of capacity building in the community, because there's really very few thinning contractors to address a scaling up, like what Laura and Kim are talking about, that he, Mike suggested that the bid, the job be allocated not by bidding, but by a request for qualifications. So, notifications went out, qualifications came in from contractors who applied for the work by describing their capability to address it, person power, equipment, experience, okay? And so, five contractors are who completed the job, and I think dollars here, we're talking about, it was $22.50 an acre, so what went out into the community is about $300,000, a substantial part of that, 255 came from state forestry, the county put in 30 matching, and also all the administrative work, and also GRT, I believe. So, there was a substantial contribution from the county and consistent, dependable support for the effort. And it finished this, just this last fall, and this is just an example of one of the areas, hopefully, there's another, let's see if there's another. This is a job at work, this is how it's done, you can see the trees are far apart and the crew is burning right in the middle of the trees, that's because there had just been a rainstorm. Or it's October or November, when fire spread is very unlikely, okay? Yeah, that's, so the Rocky Mountain Youth Corps is one of the contractors, and that's one of their projects at the campground there. Another advantage, Ray said, he said, if we get a horrendous fire up behind Wymer, the neighbors in there are going to be a lot happier if he has to drive a dozer through there to make a dozer line up behind Wymer to stop a fire, if the trees are already thinned, instead of him making a big scar like we have on this side. You all are familiar with the dozer scar on this side. Thank you, Anisa. This is an aerial, credit to Chris Dalberdeen, he's flying an ultralight around Taos, there'll be some more photos from him. This is Shady Brook, no, no, this is Pinyon Trail, Russ, that's your property, isn't it?
Russ's house.
Yeah, that's Russ's place. So, there was defensible space work involved because of the homes in the area. Sometimes, we think that the homeowners in the mountains are a problem, but actually, you know, because they're putting property next to all this dangerous forest, but in fact, they become advocates for the forest in their neighborhood. And so, all these neighbors collaborated and accepted grant work and accepted the contractors, a rough bunch they are, to come onto their land and do all this work and burn fires within, you know, 100 feet of their house, and so there you have a pretty substantial fuel break. Okay, thanks, Anisa. This is what the fire's burning, this is Shady Brook, this is the second one. This one looks a little thin, that's because you see the line headed straight up, that's a power line. So, they clear completely underneath the power line right there. Again, then we're looking at the sunny side, north side of the road, okay? Any questions about the NFL before I leave the general, about the work the county was involved in contributing to that?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner O'Donnell.
Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, the wood, did Rocky Mountain sell that wood that you cleared in Taos Canyon?
Well, technically, this is all private land, this particular job, non-federal land, so it'd be private land, Commissioner O'Donnell, and in this case, the wood technically belongs to the landowners, right? So, that area right there, there's a campground, and so, as far as possible, they gathered the wood for their commercial operation. And I know that the landowners, from working with some of them, give the wood away so far as they can, but the reality is that the wood that's out of reach typically isn't picked up. So, since one of the key products we're trying to develop here with this effort is water infiltration and soil stability, we take advantage of something called onsite utilization. So, once you get beyond the area of access, the logs get turned sideways and anchored against trees and stumps and rocks in place and become check dams for downslope flow of detritus. Our experience is that eight years equals about eight inches of buildup on those logs. Quickly, they become infiltration galleries, every one of them, amending and complementing the water contribution to the asequia you saw earlier and to the mutual domestic and to the residential wells, and ultimately to the Rio Grande. Stability in the uplands equals water in the lowlands. Additionally, it contributes to forest productivity. We're a little bit frozen in time here because those trees that are all growing right next to each other aren't growing very fast. They'll accelerate and even 40, 50, 60% increase in growth if they're spaced apart. And it's unfortunate that Taos doesn't have an active logging industry more than Mr. Barone's operation at Old Geens. There was a time when there were three, four, five small sawmills here. You had a couple in Trace Piedras, you had an operation in Pot Creek, and I want to suggest to you my understanding that it's not because of wildlife, because of endangered species, it's because the trees are gone, and the trees that are there aren't really growing very fast. So, the two industries that I've talked about, these fledgling industries of restoration in the valley and restoration in the mountains, there's a cascade of benefit that can come from the initial work, which has to be funded, it has to be subsidized. Down the road somewhere, we hope, and the vision is clear, that forest maintenance can be achieved with an active logging industry that leaves the landscape looking dynamically wonderful. It's really about selective logging, and this really is part of traditional culture, but what's happened is there's been a time of wholesale extraction that swept across our landscape, or maybe it's cumulative, but it's put us in this predicament where we're a little bit behind the eight ball, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, did that, yeah. Any other questions on the NFL?
Well, what's on the books for the coming season?
That's where we're headed, thank you.
All right, good then.
This is a photograph of the fire approaching Greer, Arizona. Next slide, please. This shows how two towns in Arizona were saved by wildfire, from wildfire by thinning. You see the blackened slope above? This is unusual, that fire runs downhill like this, but that's the case here. You see the thin stripe? Very much like the NFL grant in Taos Canyon, when the fire hit that, it did just what Ray predicted, it dropped to the ground, and the firefighters, down in the village, the people had all been doing, working, doing defensible space work, getting trees away from their homes and changing out their wood roofs, and in Alpine, only one wooden shed was lost. Greer lost about 30 homes because of that strategic fuel break. Everyone's clear it wouldn't have stopped, and that's your other handout, if you have time to read that at some point, it wouldn't have stopped it by itself, it took a fuel break plus firefighters. Okay, I just wanted to show that to demonstrate that the plan does indeed work, it's been demonstrated to do so. Go ahead, please, Anisa. Oh, this is important point, is that local training occurred with the NFL. Dozens of local forest restoration workers were trained in coordination with Kim Costelnix's organization, New Mexico Forest Industry Association. So, there's an educational component. All the Rocky Mountain Youth Corps kids went through this, first aid and forest, forest what?
Forest worker safety.
Forest worker safety, yep, next, please. Next, please. That's the crew at the studies, go ahead, Anisa. Next on the agenda, Chairman Blankenhorn. It's essential that there be active federal work just across the jurisdictional boundary to qualify for a non-federal land grant. It's probably due about the 21st of March, it hasn't been released, but it's scheduled to be out, there's only about a one-month turnaround. Working with Nathan, we hope that the commission will have a resolution pertaining to this project at the next meeting. This is Pot Creek, it's the focal area for this year that the Corps team has identified, again. Let's just look at the next slide, we might have to go back. Yeah, we're going to have to go back, thank you, Anisa. There's also a green fuel wood permit in here and compliments to the Forest Service for doing that, that's scheduled this year, that's right adjacent to this area. So, this would be similar to Taos Canyon, in that the design of the project would include a cross-canyon fuel break that would tie in to work on the federal side. That red stripe is on the, you know, this map, I always, it's on the right side of the road, as you're heading up 518, there's a great big clearing up behind Fort Burgwin and behind that neighborhood, and then those other treatments. So, this would tie in with that on the federal land. Question on this? NFL application for 2015, 255,000, and I think if the governmental bodies are inclined, the configuration that we talked about, Mr. Sanchez, would be appropriate, if Soil and Water's willing and the county's willing, the configuration could look the same. So, that's one potential project for this year, and next?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Commissioners, is Fort Burgwin possible partner financially?
Good question, we'll have a meeting on Thursday to look directly into that.
Good, thank you.
And when I say we, I mean the Corps team. This is a beautiful map. And when I say "we," I mean the Corps team. This is a beautiful map done by the GIS department here at the county. The... That's El Salto. You can see a Royal Seco Creek coming in from the high country there. It's the one right on the boundary line. That's the El Salto Land Association property. Rio Lucero is the next drainage. I hope we have a slide coming up, yes. This is what the pueblo's been doing. These are fuel treatments around the base of the mountain. And you'll recall the photo earlier of how the fire ran out of San Cristobal in a, like in a funnel shape and ran up in and burned all the way to Flag Mountain on its way to almost a Red River. This fuel break is an effort to stop that. Again, this is taken by Chris Dalberdeen from an ultralight. This is about a five-photograph panorama. You can see the Insabato Fire on the right. That, in effect, is a fuel break of its own. So El Salto, you see there on the left, and we'll go back now if we could, Anisa, that is why that fuel break, 400 feet wide, two miles long, is... This is shovel-ready. The Land Association has agreed, if conditions fall into place properly, that they would like to see this done. The Solon Water District has taken a little bitty bite out of that, a four-acre bite. That's 100 acres. It extends all the way from the Canjoncito and the tribal land on the bottom of the frame to the Wheeler Wilderness on the right on the ridge above Twining Canyon. So it holds potential defense for the whole ski valley, canyon and drainage and all those watersheds. Right, right, yeah. Well, it's private land, but held by 70 families. And Mr. Quintana and Mr. Martinez have explained to me that the legal configuration is their corporation, I think. It's called the Land Association, El Salto del Agua Land Association?
The Crisol de la Serena Land Grant?
Right. A reasonable applicant, I would think, yeah. I would think for... And then it's all about identifying a target funder. So in this case, this is, we talked about this yesterday at the Rio Grande Water Fund meeting. It's a contender for funding from the Rio Grande Water Fund. It's not a contender for the NFL because there's no federal activity on the other side of the jurisdictional boundary. That's wilderness. So they're not allowed to work there. Okay? Go ahead now. And then this, I guess, the ski valley is hidden in those clouds, but this is the high country that really the effort is... All these efforts are focused on protecting, together with the quality of life that arises from that high country. I think that's probably the last slide. Yeah, so let's go, yeah, I'll stay there. So entertain any questions, and probably I've taken more of your time than I should, but I hope we've covered the high points.
Appreciate the presentation, Mark. The Firewise, you know, private landowners in Guyana were taking advantage of that. Is that the same funding, different program?
Firewise is really a community. You identify yourselves as interested in being a collaborative. I liken it to the asequias. It's neighbors with a commonly-held values and commonly-held goals that decide to form an alliance. And so it puts you in a better position for an application for granting because you're recognized as an organized body with a board and one voice. So that El Salto potential project, for example, a key participant, not an actual applicant, would be the El Salto Firewise Association.
Where do the money come from for those individual landowners up in Guyana to get their property thinned?
Taos Solon Water Conservation District. Applications there. That's called their fire prevention program. They typically allocate funds from one to three acres. The district has recognized over time that they're starting to build small fuel breaks. And it's, these are, you know, the beginning, these little pearls of success start to form into a string of pearls of defense. And that's what that last slide is really about, where if the pueblo would connect above El Salto, it would have started with the pueblo wanted to protect the village. And then they said, "Well, let's protect the whole mountain." And then El Salto said, "Let's protect our neighborhood. Okay, let's link it together." So...
And the bigger pocket of money is the 255,000 that we're hoping to get for Pot Creek this coming season?
Yes, sir.
Are there any others out there that you're aware of that we're not taking advantage of?
Funding sources?
Yes.
Yes, sir, about fifteen to twenty sources. And Rio Grande Water Fund just presented to you, and their request for statement of interest is due the 23rd. So that is certainly high on the list. What a lot of us do, and like my time is all volunteer, because I don't... We hope that we create more work in the community for contractors like myself. But we, and speaking on behalf of all of the collaborators in the Corps team, everyone's swamped. I'm really honored that Nathan's in the room because he's planning director, too. And we are all swamped, so we tend to pick low-hanging fruit. And so NFL is low-hanging fruit. CFRP, my understanding is it takes about a month of preparation and collaboration building just to apply. That's another grant direction. So where there's a real, if I could just take that question and run with it a little bit, there's, my girlfriend says, "Mark, cannot some entity hire somebody to do what you do." Because I do that. I look for grants, but I can only go so far. Finally, I have to go back to work, too. So there's a real need in the community for more collaboration and grant writing, grant research, and so forth. It's one of those community needs, I would suggest.
Well, I hope Taos County, maybe in conjunction with the town, can figure out some way that we can speed up the thinning. Any possible ways that we can speed up this really important work, string some more pearls together?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mark, I so appreciate what you do. And the fact in your letter, you said you've baled 4,000 bales of hay. It all, everything ties itself together. And the handout you gave us, strategy number 14, says coordinate and integrate water supply and watershed planning with the Taos County Regional Water Plan, the New Mexico State Water Plan, and the New Mexico State Forestry Watershed Plan. I can see how this all ties in and you're doing it. And I hope you continue to bale as much hay as you can in this valley and because you represent a resurgence of comeback to maintaining our agricultural lands. And I appreciate that.
That's, I appreciate that very much, Commissioner O'Donnell. And I want to give a big nod of appreciation to my mentors, some of whom have already passed. I think I mentioned on there that I was given the New Mexico Asequia Association Advocate of the Year Award in 2010. But Jose Archuleta received Farmer of the Year that same year, and he just passed at 99. So I feel very honored to be able to help and continue the legacy that I just happened to get born in New Mexico. I'm very, very grateful to...
And Mr. Chairman, if there are no other questions, I move for a five-minute break.
Okay, just thanks again. We're glad that when you come to work here at Taos County, you feel special. It's important to us, the work that you do. And hopefully, we'll be able to lend more of a hand as we go forward.
Been a big help so far. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. We have a motion on the table?
I'll go ahead and second, Mr. Chairman.
Yes?
Yes.
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 Yes. We'll take a five-minute break. Or so. Thank you. We'll call the meeting back to order. Guess we need a motion for that, huh?
I'll go ahead and second.
Yes.
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 Yes. Item nine has been removed, and so we will go on to 10 resolutions and ordinances. And the first one is a discussion regarding the approval of our county-maintained road mileage inventory by our Director, Earl Salazar. Good morning, Earl.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Archuleta, Mr. Malone. As of the DOT, they need to get a list of the road mileage inventory by April 1st. So we'd like to see if we can get it approved by the Commissioners.
How many miles did we have last year?
It was 320 miles, 320.46 miles.
Oh, so...
Nothing's changed.
Nothing's changed. Huh.
Now, attached, attached within the packet with the resolution and the list of the county maintained road list is the letter from New Mexico DOT. Actually, it was addressed to Commissioner Romero. They still have you as chairman at DOT. And on there, it states that they require a certified road maintained inventory listing from Taos County. With this report, they actually, this is how they determine how much we are eligible for, for the LGRF funds, which is also forthcoming here soon. We just received the letter to apply for the new year of 1516. So the only thing that is not included in this packet is the actual ArcView maps, which I understood in planning. They hired someone through the E911 upstairs now to take care, take over the position where Brian Cribbin used to be. So I'll be getting that disc generated for Earl. So once all this is approved, and then we can send it all with the disc as they explain within the letter for the electronic version of all the ArcView maps with the county roads listed.
And the spreadsheet that you showed for a brief second there, that's part of the, part of what we send into the state?
Yes, those are part of the requirements of what they asked for within the New Mexico DOT letter. They ask for that type of information to be submitted. We also will submit that electronically through an Excel spreadsheet as they requested, including the PDF showing that it's been recorded once it's been approved through the county clerk's office.
And do we continue to update the last column of that? Because I always thought that was pretty useful. You know, so the last major pit run work and whatnot, there's some dates in there. There we go.
Any of those improvements are placed on there. Right now, I know Melissa Rogers' road was recently paved this last year. And his assistant, Deborah, actually updated some of that at this point because, of course, you know, we still have to do the other half of the road. But, you know, she did include that portion that that improvement was there. So they're fully aware of that. But from what I understood, none of the mileage has changed because there had been no adoptions, no deletions at this time. But if there's any revisions, of course, Earl and Deborah will be coming forth to you in the future if that were to happen.
Great.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner.
Commissioners, I'd also like to see, in addition to this column you're referring to, Mr. Chairman, work that needs to be done in the future. Like, say, if Santa Barbara has been done, does it need to be repaved in eight years? If there's base course added to a particular road, do you recommend adding more base course in six months or another year? And I know it would take a lot more work, but I'd like to see your recommendation for the roads in the future and how you would, you know, just so we see what's needed. So if somebody asks, we can say, "Oh, it's got base course, and we see it's going to need to be reapplied," and whatever you determine. Do you understand what I'm trying to say?
Commissioner O'Donnell, we do have a capital improvement project plan in place. Didn't they consider like the ICAP, which addresses what roads that need to be improved? Have you seen it?
No, that's not what I'm talking about. That next to each road, like, for instance, you pick a road and you say it's got dirt and base course, and what your recommendation down the line would be for continuing to keep that road, you know, up to speed. That's what I'm asking for. For instance, like Santa Barbara was just paved. Another category that said, "We'll need repaving in 10 years." Just so we, you know, we know that I'm not, you know, relying on constituents to tell me bad roads. I mean, they will. But for you to say, "Well, this is what needs to be done again, like base course on Yano Road. You just did it. When will you do it again?" Just so we get an idea of that.
And, Mr. Chairman, we've done that in the past, where there was an additional column that indicated what the quality of the road was, what improvements it needed, whether there were culverts that were needed. And then there was an additional column next to that that indicated the cost.
I do recall that back in the day when I was there. That possibly could happen. I'm pretty sure you guys can add that extra column and do that. And, I mean, it's more informational for us, but right now, that column, and I think Deborah did show it to me, I'm not sure, that column is there. I just think they hid it because that's not part of the information DOT is requiring us to do with the resolution today.
It's already on the Excel sheet.
Yes. So it's something that maybe Earl and Deborah can work further on with the foreman in keeping it updated. So that way, if there's any questions and you were to call, they can actually give you an update on that.
One time, we also had even photographs included showing the quality of the surface and all that good stuff.
That's something.
I'll look into that, too.
And, Mr. Chairman, with regards to PIL funding, the amount of mileage that we have in the county is submitted. And that also, I believe, helps in order to get more monies from the PIL fund correctly. Is that correct? It doesn't? Because I know in the past that they would require inventory of county roads.
The PIL fund, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Romero is basically from...
Private lands.
Well, no, it's federal lands.
Federal lands.
So that's how they determine the acreage of that, where we would actually be getting tax dollars for those properties had they not been federal properties.
At one time, we used to do that. And that was a decade ago. And I'm sure, I'm not sure when it changed.
Mr. Commissioner, I believe it's for the Secure Rule Schools funding.
SRS.
But that's that questionable funding right now that we're not sure if we're going to be getting.
Okay. That funding has not been passed at the federal level at this point.
Thank you, Leandra, for clarifying that.
Mr. Fambro?
The ArcView version that you spoke about, that also shows the private roads, where ours, like, end and private starts and...
I personally haven't seen the map. The few that I did see when Brian Cribbin was here as an employee, they did show where the private road was. And the county road is actually highlighted based on the mileage and where it goes along the terrain. Obviously, you know, as time passes, roads move back and forth, yeah.
Right. Thank you.
I agree with the other Commissioners that it is important to develop that last column because that's how we plan out our projects, you know. In addition, and I'm not even so much talking about the ones that you were talking about in terms of the big capital projects, but like, where are we going to need our front-end loader to put pit run in Gabe's district? And then when it switches over and, you know, and that last column can be really useful to, when you look at each road and then start thinking about it, to make that plan for the coming summer. More work.
We'll find one. We'll make one.
And, Mr. Chairman, does this include a bridge list as well? Or they are, are bridges thrown within?
No, not from what I've seen. The road mileage inventory does not. I don't know if Public Works is planning. Obviously, now we're looking at bridges and so forth and doing some work on them. Maybe that's something that they need to work on now in creating a list with bridges and along which county road or what roads intersect. So that way, we have more of a good inventory of what bridges we are actually responsible to maintain.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we are already working on that list. We actually have an Excel spreadsheet for that. And now we're actually corresponding that with the DOT. Evaluation of those bridges so that we can prioritize those bridges and the amount of money that those bridges are going to cost us in the future. So we will have that available to you.
Make sure it includes my Pilaud Bridge.
It has all the bridges, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much.
Well, this one, we definitely need a vote on.
I got a quick question. In District Two, there's a road, Cornelio Sisneros Road, that says .4 miles. There's an area that Village Questa has jurisdiction up to like... Deputy Manager Brent, do you know what the name of that street is? Is it Don Martinez? Don Martinez Road. And then there's a section there that's kind of just no man's land that I've understood being county road. It would be going north. And that continues Cornelio Sisneros Road. There's a Questa Vista's trail. And there's some property ownership that's owned by Juan Sisneros and another gentleman named Mr. Locom. I'm not sure what... But that area there's never been really maintained. And I'm not sure if it's been a county-addressed road or if it's a village-addressed road. I know that from the turnoff in Cerro, going up Cornelio Sisneros, you go up about a quarter mile, and then it kind of, the maintenance kind of ends right there in that spot, so... mile, and then it kind of, the maintenance kind of ends right there in that spot, so.
I've seen that, I know.
I think Eric was explaining to me that, that part of that mileage is, it goes up to a certain way, but they add that turn, I guess there's like a turnoff there, and that's the one they add part of that mileage, so it don't go all those, as far as you think.
South.
Yeah.
We, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Gago, we did do a GPS on that. Charlie Gonzalez, Gonzalez brought that to our attention, and the county maintained road does not make the full half circle on that. It actually only goes up to where the turnoff is. From that point forward, the county's never maintained, and it's not on our, our road maintenance list. So it's never been adopted by the county.
We do have a process whereby we can add roads.
Right.
If it's not pri, if it's not being maintained, of course.
Well, right. So I guess the concern I have is here, probably in the next five years, we're going to have the possibility of Chevron mining, wanting to use that back road for travel to move some of their topsoil that they're going to want to put on that three-foot cover. And they're going to want to know who's owning the road, who, who's going to help maintain it. And I want to be able to make sure that, if anything, that the, if the county has a capability of obtaining the rest of that little section, then we move forward with an agreement with Chevron that, as they're continuing to use that roadway, that they maintain it, put better material there, and come up with an end product at the end of their completion of, of transferring some of that topsoil in that area down the road. I mean, there's still, it's still down the ways, but I'd rather be more prepared for it now than, than, you know, a month before that, that all comes up. So maybe the county can consider adopting that little piece there, or we can find out who the property owners are there, and maybe we can move forward with that.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we'll look, we'll look into that and, and who actually owns those, that piece of property.
Thank you.
There's no further discussion. Do we have a motion to accept the inventory?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Commissioner Gago.
Yes.
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 Yes. Moving on to 10B, this is a discussion regarding the approval of a resolution withdrawing and repealing the request for cap funding for certain roads in, in the prior resolution, and substituting a request for the same funding for different roads. Mr. Salazar.
Mr. Chairman, I think we are trying to move some money from-
Well, no, what, what this resolution is, is it's asking to remove a road off the previous resolution that was approved here recently for the LGRF 1415. It's my understanding, due to some changes and some acquiring some, the county acquired some property, we are asking to remove a particular road off the original resolution, which was 2014-41. We are asking to remove Chamisa Road C116 from that, and asking to repeal that resolution and to approve this resolution, which just includes Melissa Rogers Road, due to that purchase of that property. And what we are wanting to do is apply Chamisa Road to the new application that's coming up for 1516 for District Three.
What, what is the amount of, Mr. Chairman? What is the amount of money?
I didn't bring those with me. The total amount of the actual agreement, from what I see here, would be $108,943, but that also includes our 25% share. Right now, the way the resolutions read, they would have certain roads on them, but we would make sure that each road that is within the LGRF of 1415, we get an equal amount placed towards that road.
Mr. Chairman, who brought this?
This, this was something that was brought forth to me by upper management in order for us to proceed forward, to get a clear, concise direction in order to proceed with getting all these roads, obviously getting an engineering bar down, getting our clearance and so forth. So this is something that was brought forth to me, to bring forward. We, I need to know if we're going to continue with Chamisa Road, or if we're going to approve this resolution and take it off.
Yeah, I'm, I don't know that I would agree with this. Commissioners, Chamisa Road is in my district, and if you drive out there now, it's always a mess, and then in the summertime, there's a lot of dust, and it, it's definitely a road that requires a lot of maintenance, and it's traveled on by quite a bit of people trying to go into the town area.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the, the road would continue to be maintained because it is on our inventory list. The issue is that we had spread out the LGRF money among the five districts. When the purchase of the Santa Stevan property came into question, at that point, it was told to staff that we would give up a certain amount of the LGRF in order to do that purchase. And so we cannot do the reimbursement from the LGRF until we get those roads done. So the resolution would actually go ahead and put that road in the 2016, 2015 plan, and that would allow us to get our reimbursement 2014, 2015, because we don't have the cash funds and actually to do Chamisa Road, because we use those funds to do the purchase of the property. So that's, that's the issue. It's not that that road won't be maintained or swept or any of those things, it's just that we can't go through and, you know, put the amount of base course or material that we had planned on doing that because of the, the purchase.
I, I understand that. However, what is the length of that road? Of the unpaved portion where it stops at Chamisa?
No, no, no.
The town limits to, to the middle road. Is it about a mile?
Let me look here really quick for you.
Does it goes from District Three to District One?
Right now, it's, it's less, less than half a mile, it's .47. From the way it reads here, and I know the portion you're talking about is the portion that links with Camino Medio, and it comes up to where it was paved, and I think it's a little ways past Sunshine Road, somewhere around there.
If, if we went out there today, what is the condition of the road?
Earl.
It, it's in pretty good shape. It, you know, it need, probably needs some base course on it, but.
So what kind of a commitment can we get that, that it would be get base course or at least the very necessary material to, to be able to get it?
We will stay on it for sure and maintain it and make sure that we get all the washboards and all that stuff off, but we probably won't be able to put too much material on it.
We, we do currently have a PO and a contract, obviously, that we did a bid on for maintain material for our county roadway, so there, there is access to materials if needed for his department to, to get for maintenance on that road.
So this is basically a repayment from the purchase of the Santa Stevan property. That, that property was purchased for $70,000, was that right?
$120,000.
$120,000? And I can't remember what we had agreed to, but one of the agreements was the, the District Three's $58,000 share of the current year's cap co-op funding. And that's what this is, that's what this resolution is about.
Yes, it is. It's removing Chamisa Road off this current resolution and, well, off the old resolution and repealing that, and asking that this new resolution be approved, just indicating Melissa Rogers Road. But the way we allocate the funds will be done on a separate spreadsheet, obviously, and we would work that out, obviously, with DOT on how that all works out within those three agreements for the other four roads.
So what was, what was the total amount that Melissa Rogers got, then?
I don't have it broken out right now, per se, because we just received the agreements early, late November from DOT, completely signed and approved. So I would still have to sit down, obviously, with Leandra and Lupe in finance to make sure all the monies are going to be available, and then me and Deborah will sit down, and I can't really tell you because I don't have a breakdown, because I don't have quotes yet. We would still have to go out to bid to see how all that's going to play out and also get an engineer on board.
But basically, what this would do is transfer those monies from Chamisa over to Melissa Rogers.
Melissa Rogers within that cap area. So we would have to look at all four projects and see how that money is going to be allocated equally within the other four roads for those four districts.
What is the deadline for this?
Uh, this one, what I'm trying to do is trying to meet some, I'm trying to be proactive and pre-plan, and I'm trying to meet deadlines so we can get contractors on board before springtime hits, so that way, we can hit the projects up and running, including any other special projects that the commission has expressed wishes for that we need to get done. Obviously, these contractors do book up fairly quickly. It's hard to get them in the summer, as we can see what we had to do to backtrack on these last two projects. So I'm trying to get ahead of the curve here and ahead of the eight ball, and trying to help Public Works to keep that ball rolling so we don't lose that momentum.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I would ask that we, out of respect for my district and my constituents, that this matter on the agenda be tabled today until we get those full numbers. I, I just want some clarity. I want to make sure that my district is not being cheated out of monies available for improvements in my district. I understand that we got to finish Melissa Rogers, and I know that last year, between Commissioner Barone and, and myself and Commissioner Blankenhorn, we all agreed to fund certain roads, and we had already contributed X amount of dollars towards Melissa Rogers. I do not want to leave my constituents on Chamisa Road with a road that that can't, they cannot pass on. So I would hope, Commissioners, that, out of respect, that we table this item on the agenda until the next commission meeting.
At, at some point, though, we do have to figure out how the Santa Stevan purchase is going to be paid for. And so I'm not, I'm not convinced that it's, it's good to hold it off, but let's get, have some further discussion. Commissioner Fambro.
If, in fact, we do table this, myself and Earl have something, we're doing in that area tomorrow, we'll go and, and by the next commission meeting, we can give you a report to how that road looks and what improvements he feels it actually needs, because we're going to be in that area tomorrow anyway, so.
And I, I also want to meet with, you indicated there was some upper management that was involved in the decision. I wasn't involved, I wasn't asked for my opinion on it. So I want to be able to meet with whomever it was, including, I would imagine Commissioner Blankenhorn and Steve, yeah.
Actually, this is, this was new to me. I hadn't, I hadn't had any input into this whatsoever.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, upper management is me. This was a deal that was struck between the Commissioners. Commissioner Romero, you, at that point during that meeting, basically in executive session, said that you would give up that funding in order to, to do the, the Santa Stevan purchase. And so I directed staff to move forward with the purchase of the Santa Stevan property, which we use the money for, and to take this off the LGRF for Chamisa Road, so that we could make sure that we mid-ends meet on both sides. So the decision was made basically at the direction of the commission, which you basically said this is how you wanted the Santa Stevan property done. So it wasn't that anybody was hiding or, or misleading. Basically, what it is, is we use that money already to purchase the Santa Stevan property. And so we have to take this off the LGRF, because we don't have general fund money to put into it to keep it going, and we need to get the LGRF process moving.
Mr. Cordova, the money to purchase the Santa Stevan property came from what fund?
That actually came from the 103 Fund.
Yeah, it didn't come in.
The GRTs.
At all from any of these other funds?
No.
So when we made that decision, it was understood that there was going to be a small amount available for, for Chamisa Road, and that's why I agree, too.
And I think the funds were from other sources. We did have general fund money that was going to go towards, there was a couple of roads that were in question, Ranchito, or Ranchos School Road and Chamisa Road.
Right.
We've also been looking at Ranchos Road as a potentially generally, general fund-funded project in your district.
Right.
So if, we will get you the numbers, we'll get you to see exactly where the wash was, and it, this just makes it easier for us to get that money back in our coffe, we can spend it on a project that's ready to go, get the money back from the LGRF, and then on the new year, we'll figure out which road is a priority for your district for other funds.
There was also a small pocket of money available for improvements to the road that goes into the Ranchos Elementary School. Is that still?
That pocket of money's still available. It was just a little short to do the entire project, though. And so in order to really address it and get the entire project done well, complete, and to match the, the work that the school did, it was going to require a little bit more money, and that's where we'll, in the new budget cycle, put it in there, and you can make the decision if Ranchos is the road you want to complete, or if you want to put some of that towards Chamisa as well, or there may be some for both, to get both of them to the standard that you're pleased with.
So, so Commissioners, I, I do believe that there is some clarity that has to be made. I, I want to meet with our manager as well as get the commitment from our road department to make sure that that Chamisa Road is, is in good condition as we speak. I know that during the snow seasons and the mud season, it becomes a, a mini mud bog in there, so just want to make sure that we don't have anything else but a good road at this point.
Of course, this is our bad road season, and so-
It is.
We've got a lot of bad roads, but I do want to make-
But Chamisa is always extraordinary on that.
I do want to make a couple of points here, yeah. So we, prior to this coming year, we had two buckets of money that were at the discretion and still remain somewhat at the discretion of each Commissioner to work with management, work with administration, and of course, the road department to choose certain projects. One, of course, is what we're talking about now, the local government fund, and that gets divided five times, and it's about $58,000 per district that we each have to think about in terms of, you know, where we want that money to be spent. And then there's another 30 that we each get from the operating budget. This coming year, I believe, I'm hoping, that we're going to be fortunate enough to have another bucket of money because of the good work that, that administration has done, and the fact that we got our PIL money. And, and we're going to have to make those decisions in the near future. But the decision we're talking about now, you know, the other three Commissioners are at a bit of a disadvantage because they weren't there at the time, but during executive session, when we made the decision to purchase the Santa Stevan property, at that point, it was agreed that District Three's LGF money for two years would be suspended to make up that difference in the general fund. And I just wanted to make sure that my memory is the same as your memory, Commissioner Romero.
Well, we couldn't have made that decision in, in executive session. It would have, had to have been made in, in public session. Otherwise, we'd be in violation. And so if we do have a record of that, I'd like to see it. Nonetheless, I, I would still like to see charts, the budget, how much is available for each one of those roads. And I think it's still, it's also of a lot of benefit to the other Commissioners to see exactly what is available in each respective district. That way, we're not second guessing and, you know, upper management, just because they want making these decisions on their own.
Melissa Rogers was identified as one of the roads. Tell us what the remaining $150,000 is going for with next, with this year's cap co-op money, please.
Geez, I don't have that in front of me. I, I know we got four roads, and I know one of them involves Camino Medio, Melissa Rogers, obviously Chamisa's on there. And let me think of District, District Two, District Five. District Five, it was Santa Barbara. It was to, this last current year, we did in Santa Barbara, obviously, it was out of the road department funds, the general fund. We did some repairs in some weak areas of the current paving that's there, and this year, Santa Barbara is probably going to get an entire overlay to protect that existing pavement there to make it last longer. So that's for District Five. District Four, I'm trying to remember who is District, what was in District Four? I don't have the list in front of me, but-
Guyana Canyon, I think it was.
No, 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 Guyana Canyon was to the special projects fund. It was a separate, it was a separate project for District, no, District Four was Melissa Rogers.
Yes.
District Two.
And District Two, there was a road up there that we had to- And District Two, there was a road up there that we had to address. I just can't recall which road it was, on top of the CDBG that we're already receiving and getting that on board and rolling now. Um, Anita's working with DFA to get that packet to me so we can start getting out to bid soon. I just cannot recall what District Two's road was.
Can you put it on paper, Mr. Chairman? It would be nice to see.
Sure, I will get you everything on paper. I'll get you the graph you need and, and the breakdown. I will work on that today to get it to you.
Thank you.
Do you want to via email?
Uh, let's finish the discussion before we figure, figure out what we're going to finally vote on or decide. Commissioner Fambro.
Once again, we're seeing here a, a pattern of things that the previous commission did not complete and dump in our lap, and we're behind the eight ball trying not, let me finish. And, and we're, and we're having to decide, you know, basically at the seat of our pants, but I will say this, I don't believe our manager would make this up and, and put something of this dollar amount and this type of project. I don't believe that he would make that up and just pull that out. I believe there was some kind of an agreement, and I think the integrity of this commission is we need to hold to our agreements.
Um, I, however, out of respect for the constituents in my district, really feel that I need to look at what we did in fact agree on, and I, I don't remember ever, um, committing, uh, spending a hundred and twenty thousand dollars and then leaving the rest of the road, uh, surfaces, uh, without any improvements on them. District, Tom Holder Road, where this property is located, is in fact, is it all District Three or is it District One as well? It's right on the boundary?
Is it all District Three or?
All District Three.
District Three, yeah.
Well, in, in open session, you know, you're correct. Obviously, we can't make any decisions in closed session. In open dis, in, in open session, we made a decision to purchase Santa Stevan, uh, property for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, um, so that in the long run, uh, Tom Holder could be, um, could be expanded. And that money was taken from the general fund, and, uh, it was part of the understanding that it would, uh, in the future, come from discretionary funds for District Three. Um, and, and so, that's the way that went.
If, if we could get that motion or whatever the record, I would like to see it. I, I mean, even if the commission decides something else today, I, I would still like to see that motion on record.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, just to clarify, that motion was to purchase the Santa Stevan property.
It, it didn't include the dollar amounts. Nevertheless, it's very demonstrable that the hundred and twenty thousand dollars came from the general fund, not from the road fund. It came from the general fund, and it needs to be, um, repaid. And so, um, I, I, you know, the, the, the CAP COOP money was the money that was discussed to repay it. Um, and so, if, if, if you're not agreeing to that now, I guess we're going to have to come up with an alternative source.
Well, the, the property has been paid for already, and, Mr. Cordova, the 103, those are funds that were in excess, correct?
Yes, and what, well, we actually had budgeted in the 399 with a transfer from there to, and we just, instead of doing the transfer and going through 399, we just paid for it directly out of the 103, but it was budgeted accordingly. It was excess, but yes, it was budgeted accordingly.
It's not like we had to make it up.
Well, then, in, in that case, then we're going to need, um, to come up with another four hundred and eighty thousand dollars so that we, each, each other district can take an equal amount. I mean, that's just the way we do it. And, uh, and, and then, if that's the case, then it would have to come from, uh, PILT or tax money, and then it would still result in the same, uh, the same thing. It, it, so the repayment wouldn't come from CAP COOP money, then it would come from, uh, capital improvement money.
A hundred and twenty thousand dollars to four hundred and some thousand. That, you're, you're just trying to muddle the water. Um, I would just ask that the Commissioners allow, um, that this be tabled for today and that, uh, decision be made at the next commission meeting. We do have the time, uh, staff has indicated, um, and so, I just want to make sure that all those numbers are correct and, uh, my district is not being left out.
Yeah, the four eighty was multiplication, it wasn't muddling. Nevertheless, um.
Mr. Chairman, uh, uh, Commissioners, are we discussing on the table, it's a hundred and eight thousand? Is this what we're discussing? Is that amount?
This, this is, um, there was a portion allocated in the original resolution which was approved here about several months ago, and this is just one of the three agreements that is given to us by DOT, which make up the CAP, the SP, and the school bus route, and this is the cap portion of it, which is a hundred and eight thousand.
So, if you go up above on the, uh, resolution, uh, the amount that Chamisa, we had agreed to allow for Chamisa was how much?
On the original resolution, it wasn't broken out per road, it was just listed as both roads due to what was originally applied for by the former Public Works Director, and we needed to have these resolutions in place before the end of October in order to receive those agreements, or we would have lost the complete funding.
There was a cost estimate that was provided to the commission.
Yes, in that meeting. I just don't have it on hand up on me right now.
Okay, I would like to see that, um, because what in fact, what this was going to do was help connect the middle road to the, uh, uh.
Oh, I'm incorrect.
Paid portion of the county.
I'm sorry, Earl had a copy here. On the original letter for Chamisa, the total came out to an approximate of sixty thousand dollars, and Millicent Rogers was getting the other sixty thousand.
Correct.
Correct.
And that's what we had agreed to.
I have copies of the letters here that you wrote with him.
Did Commissioner Barone, I think, was dedicating some of that money as well to Millicent Rogers.
Right, that, that was the sixty thousand dollar share that each Commissioner gets.
From District One and, from District One, and was it a combination of District One and Three?
Yeah, I, I'm not too sure on how that came about because I wasn't involved when that process happened. All I, um, based the resolutions on that we originally approved was based on the application and the information that was provided to me from the previous.
I, I would really like to see some clarity on that.
Like I say, I can, I can create a sheet and break it all out for you, not a problem.
So, maybe at the, at the next meeting, um, you can bring back a list of projects that you're planning to use the CAP, uh, COOP money for. That's approximately three hundred thousand dollars. That will include, uh, Santa Barbara, um, the road in Mr. Gallegos's district, uh, whatever.
Okay.
Whatever you have for Mr. Fambro's district also.
Okay.
But in addition to that, uh, please come up with an accounting for the purchase of the Santa Stevan Road and demonstrate how that's going to be paid back to the general fund. Um, if, if you, um, and, and along with the recommendation, so, one possible recommendation is that it would come from the local government fund, like we had talked about previously. Another possibility would be that you would say, we're going to have some extra money in the budget this year for each district, and so, Districts One, Two, Four, and Five get the same amount as the purchase, um, and, and then that would, that would equalize it. Uh, then, you know, that would be, then, then you wouldn't, wouldn't share in that particular bucket of money in order to pay back the Santa Stevan Road, so.
And in addition to what Commissioner Blankenhorn is talking about, maybe we can also add extra other history as to what District Ones and Four have already gotten prior to what you're talking about, because they, they have received additional funding as well, not just for Millicent Rogers, but for other roads.
Oh, how far back in prior are you asking?
Let's go back two years.
Years?
You'd have to go back four, Commissioner. As you well know, C-110 was funded by several Commissioners joining in, and so, C-110 was funded in that way, and then the next year, um, you graciously, uh, put in your fifty-eight thousand for Caiajón, as I did mine.
Correct.
So, we all kind of went together and we got Caiajón done. Um, and then the, the, part of that was that Commissioner Barone had, um, contributed two years in a row to C-110.
Let's, let's go back to the time that we started serving our commission terms, 2013.
That won't tell the whole story.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, I, I just, I mean, staff will do whatever the commission chooses to do, but it's, in my opinion, a waste of staff's time to do that. We have a lot of projects in front of us that we're trying to move forward. This commission has asked us to be proactive in trying to get these things done in the, at the beginning of spring, the first of summer, instead of in October, November, as we have in the past, and that's the whole purpose of this. Uh, staff is moving at the direction that the commission has been giving them for over the last two and a half years since I've been here, and not separate from that, and I think that the staff's integrity is on some level being questioned because of that, and I don't understand that. The purchase of the Santa Stevan property happened, the commission agreed that they would give up certain portions of their, um, general fund money or special projects money in order to do that Santa Stevan property, with the understanding that the LGRF money would be separated by the other four Commissioners in the future, and that was the, that was the understanding. That was discussed in, in a session, it was voted on in open meeting as far as the purchase of the Santa Stevan property. The property has been purchased, and again, we can sit here and, and go over what's been agreed to and not agreed to for over the last two and a half years that I've been here, but the reality is then, we're not going to get projects moving in the spring and in the summer that the commission wants done, um, because we're doing background checks.
Mr. Archuleta, if you can provide that record where we agreed on how those monies were going to be.
Okay, Commissioner Romero, um, let's get the record straight, okay? We purchased the, the property in your district for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Is it your position now that, um, there's no monies to come from your road projects in the future to make up that hundred and twenty thousand?
Correct, um, because we had, eh, at the time, excess monies, uh, that were allowed by, or found by staff in order to pay for the purchase of this property. Uh, and, take into account the fact that this isn't just my road. It's a road that serves a huge area that is growing in, in my district, District Three and District One. Um, it'll also add to what we are, or complement what we're trying to do with the middle road eventually.
Let's have important road projects, Commissioner.
Of course.
And you made a decision to use your money to purchase the Santa Stevan property for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and that was to be deducted from future projects.
Well, that's, and that's the, the clarity that I want, is there was a motion that was made, and so, if we can get a copy of that motion from the clerk's office, just to confirm exactly what was, uh, agreed on, and, um.
We do what was agreed on. Everybody in the room knows exactly what was agreed on, so, in any event, I'm not sure how we're going to resolve this, um, and I guess we'll have to take it up at a, at a future meeting, at a very near future meeting.
Mr. Chairman.
Because it is important for us to, um, as Elsa and Earl have said, to get these projects on the books.
Correct.
Uh, so that we can, um, so that we can complete them in, in due time.
And we can do that at the very, the next meeting.
And, but of course, that's not the critical issue. Uh, Commissioner O'Donnell.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, I would make a motion that we table this until after lunch and allow the county clerk to pull the minutes and, um, bring it back at that point. I, this does bring up the question I've learned at NMAC about open meetings and public inspections, and that after any kind of executive session, a clear and concise description of what went on and what was voted on should be reflected in the minutes, so I'd, I'd just like to see if this is reflected in the minutes, so I, so move to table till after lunch.
The, uh, I, I don't know if this would allow staff enough time to come up with a list or a graph of those expenses that have been incurred, or those monies have been allocated to.
That's not even relevant to discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm just asking for tabling until after lunch, that the clerk could check the minutes for us.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, if I can.
Please.
Um, Mr. Chairman Commissioners, the, the record will reflect, Commissioner O'Donnell, that the Santa Stevan property be purchased. What was discussed in executive session is not, there are no minutes to executive session what was discussed, uh, in there. So, what will, the record will reflect is that, um, the Santa Stevan property was purchased, which it is and is public record.
Uh, Mr. Malone, um, we, we may have to take a vote here, uh, on, on the Commissioners, and, and the only two Commissioners, obviously, are Mr. Romero, Commissioner Romero and myself. Um, but in order to, um, educate the other three Commissioners, could we have the people who were there in that meeting come up to the podium and say what was agreed to?
Well, the matters that are discussed in executive session are confidential unless you choose to breach that confidentiality. Um, the, any, anything that is not, um, voted on in public session is not enforceable. That's clear.
Well, my point is, there's at least five or six people who were in that room who would remember that Commissioner Romero did agree to use some of future funding for his district, um, to make up the hundred and twenty thousand dollar difference. Now, his memory may be failing him now, but I suspect that there's a number of people who were in that room who would remember just that, and I wonder if we could use that to educate the other three Commissioners so that we can come to a, uh, decision about this, uh, allocation of our resources.
Again, all I can say is what I've already said, and that is, there's already been a bunch of discussion about what people remember about executive session. Executive session is confidential unless that confidentiality is breached.
By?
By the people who were there. I'm not going to breach it.
Mr. Chair, at this time, I'd, I'd, uh, second Commissioner O'Donnell's, uh, motion to table till after lunch due to the fact that we've been in the meeting for roughly about four hours, and, you know, I don't think we're going to find any resolution at this time, so just respectfully, I'd like to have a, second that motion to table till after lunch, come back after lunch and continue the.
Yep, Mr. Chairman, if, Candace, if you can, Ms. O'Donnell, if you can, uh, reiterate the motion.
I move that we, um, ask the county clerk to bring up the minutes regarding the land tracks, uh, transaction, and that is the only, uh, matter I would like to see at this point.
Okay.
We already know what's in the minutes, so you're just creating work for somebody. The only thing that's in the minutes, Commissioner O'Donnell, is as County Manager Archuleta related, we agreed to purchase the property for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. That's it. There's no, there's no references to future allocation of funds.
And, and Mr. Chairman, as Mr. Malone has pointed out, that anything in executive session, if it is not detailed in the minutes, when we come out of executive session, is not enforceable. And so, I would just ask, we consider in the future, any kind of these behind closed deals are agreed upon, that they are brought back and, uh, relayed in, in open session so we don't have this kind of problem, which puts me in a very awkward position.
Thank you, Ms. O'Donnell, uh, Mr. Chairman, and, uh, she says it exactly right. I, I did not participate in that type of a closed-door, uh, uh, agreement. It, um, what we agreed on was that we were going to purchase that property from a certain, uh, fund that had excess monies available, um, and I presented the idea to the commission, and we all agreed to that, and, and that's where it went. Um, where I do remember contributing dollars from District Three was, uh, Caiajón Road, which was in two thousand, um, thirteen, and then in two thousand fourteen, uh, I agreed to, uh, contribute a small portion of, uh, my funds from District Three to the, uh, completion of, of Millicent Rogers Road. But there was also an understanding by the commission and Commissioner Barone that there was going to be some funds available in order to improve that road, uh, from where the Tana Taos, uh, finishes, uh, completion of Chamisa Road to, um, Camino del Medio, because we know that it's a, a very problematic road, and, um, so that's why I made the decision to allocate those funds, and the rest of the commission agreed to that as well. commission agreed to that as well.
Yes, well, Commissioner Gallegos first, please.
Mr. Chair, I rescind my second due to the fact that I don't think we need to go back those four minutes. So I rescind my second.
Bob?
Mr. Chairman, just, just to clarify, and I'm not sure that Commissioner O'Donnell meant for it to appear this way, but there would be no minutes of what happened in executive session.
Correct.
It would only be that if something was acted on outside of the executive session, there would be minutes of it. Okay.
We have a motion on the table. Is there a second?
That motion has been withdrawn from, the second has been withdrawn.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would like, out of respect, to the people of District Three, the residents of Chamisa Road, that this particular resolution be tabled until we have all the, the known facts and numbers. It's not going to hurt anybody. It's not going to hurt our schedule for the rest of the year. That it be tabled until the next meeting, commission meeting, which is going to be the, what is it, the 17th of February? It gives staff two weeks to come in with the details that we have asked for.
What details are those? You want to go over that?
A list. Yeah. I still want to see a motion, the, the complete motion that the clerk can provide of the decision, the day that we made that decision with regards to Santi Stavon Road. But also where we agree to the certain amounts of monies that were going to be allocated to the various districts. That was done, was it done last year at this time? I can't remember. But...
Mr. Chairman, I believe I had a motion on the floor, and it was with, the second was withdrawn. I believe maybe you should take care of that item first, if there is a second to my motion.
What motion is still on the table?
The motion was that we table this until after lunch and take a look at the minutes. And that, to me, is about the only compromise I can make at this point.
The second was rescinded because we already know what the minutes say.
The second was rescinded.
So there's really no, there's really no purpose to that.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, there's a, so fail for, there, to a second, it dies, and now Commissioner Romero makes another motion to table to the next meeting, and that's, we're looking for a second.
Thank you. Is there a second? None heard. The, the motion fails. It's about lunchtime. Maybe this would be a good time to break for lunch, and we can continue this discussion after lunch.
Motion, Mr. Chair, to table this item till after lunch and take break for lunch now at 11:55.
Is there a second? None heard. The motion dies for lack of a second.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make another motion.
Okay, try again.
Motion to approve Resolution 2014-41 in funding for a different road, which is now Millicent Rogers.
Actually, Resolution 2015-7.
Oh.
Dash eight.
Which one is it?
2015-dash-eight.
Dash eight.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? If not, please call for the vote.
Yes.
Mr. Gallegos?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
No, and, and let me just make a comment. Again, this is what gets county managers in, in trouble. This, this type of things that go behind closed doors and commissioners when they see themselves in chairmanship position. I've served on this commission for 12 years already. And this type of agreements and arrangements that are made behind closed doors are what create a lot of conflict in, in commissions, and it makes it almost impossible to, to work together. And it's something that be, we need to be very careful with. I understand the need that Millicent Rogers needs to be completed, but there are also needs in, in District Three that the residents in, in my district have. And previous commission had agreed to, to making sure that those needs were met. And just want to say that I'm very unhappy with the, the decision here today.
Please continue the call for the vote.
No, and I would like to say in the future, if we have any of these votes that come out of executive session, that we specify the, the deals.
Yes. Is there a motion to break for lunch?
Actually, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Driscoll, I know I was to get back, he's got a real quick item. How long do you think, Russ? I mean, because I think it's...
[inaudible]
If we could move that up to get Mr. Driscoll on his way. I know other people are here waiting, but...
It's okay with me. That would be, we'd be looking for a motion to amend the agenda, then?
Yes.
Could you please make that motion?
I'm trying to find his item on the, it's B. So it'd be 11B. I make a motion that we move 11B up to now before we break for lunch.
Is there a second?
Second.
Call for the vote?
Yes.
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 Yes. Just before your presentation, Mr. Driscoll, I just want to say that the discussion after the second is the time for discussion. Once the, the call for the vote is taken, discussion is inappropriate.
Okay.
But what's even more inappropriate is Commissioner Romero's accusations. So thank you for that.
I, I second that.
Mr. Driscoll, please.
I think you guys have got before you a request. My name is Russ Driscoll. I'm chief of the Rio Fernando Fire District of Taos Canyon. Commissioner, Chair, Commissioners, I'm, I'm glad to be here. Glad to see you all. Glad to see some, some new faces up there. I'm here requesting permission to expend some funds that we have to purchase property in Taos Canyon. We currently have a single station up there with a small substation. The substation, we went before to try and get funding to build a, a larger station there, and we found we have an encroachment problem on that property. We've been messing with this now since 2008. Another piece of property has come up available in the area that we're trying to put this station in. And so I've got the funds available through the fire excise tax dollars to expend to purchase this property. There are certain criteria the property needs to meet. Our main station sits at mile marker 265 on 64. Ideally, ISO would like to have a station every five miles. So we're looking at that area from 259 to like 261 is the area that, that the station would be ideal in. Taos Volunteer Fire Department Station Two, their substation, is literally five miles driving distance from mile marker 260. Jurisdictional boundaries don't, doesn't occur with us in the fire service. It doesn't matter where the fire is at, what the, the call is, we're going to go. So this mile marker from 259 to 261 is an ideal area for it. Department of Transportation, because of the 40 mile an hour speed limit in Taos Canyon, we have to have 300 feet of clear visibility going both directions on the highway from a 36-inch height. Okay? Those of you that drive Taos Canyon regularly know that there's lots of curves, corners, ups and downs in that area. This piece of property we found actually meets that cri, that criteria, which is, is a big deal in, in Taos Canyon. Currently on the property, it's 1.42 acres. It does have a double-wide modular home on it. It's got a double-car garage on it. I'll be quite honest with you, that has nothing to, to do with what I'm looking for. I'm just looking at the property. Proposal, the double-wide, we may take, and, and there's some funding in there that I've proposed to go ahead and turn it into a commercial, an administrative facility. The only thing the property did not meet under inspection is the, the Blackwater affluent, the, the septic system is only designed for a three-bedroom modular home. This happens to be a four-bedroom modular home. Our discussion has been to take at least two of the bedrooms out and turn them into office space, turn the, the living room kitchen area into a large meeting space. The double-car garage is really no use to us other than, than storage space. It's too small to get fire apparatus in. There's no heating or anything like this in it. The other thing that didn't pass inspection was the initial advertisement of this property said that the modular home was on a permanent foundation. That is incorrect. It does not have a permanent foundation in there. In the proposal for the funding, what's going on is, is we actually had plans approved in 2008 for a four-bay station, 40 by 60. And when we went to move forward on it with the current piece of property we own, found out that there was an encroachment issue that we couldn't, couldn't, couldn't get involved with the finance authority to finance the building at this point. From that period of time through today, we've been saving funds to purchase property and building and to put apparatus in this, this building. Once we get a building up, and I add another water tender to our, our fleet, that automatically will lower our ISO rating down to an 8B, which is going to give me an increase in funding, which allows me to go back out and order another piece of apparatus. The fire service, we have a tendency to be very proactive and do whatever we can as quickly as we can to get funds available so we can buy new equipment and go forward. So pretty much what I'm here today to do is, is ask you guys for permission to purchase this property. I think you've got a copy of the MLS in, in, in front of you there. If there's any questions this time, I'll, I'll answer them to the best of my ability.
Commissioner Fambro.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Driscoll's also had the forethought to make this station big enough to where once it gets completely full of the required, he can declare this a new main station, because it's more than five, and he can get the funding instead of at a substation, which is 60% of a main. He can declare this a main once he identifies a chief officer and get additional funding because he's looking far enough in advance. I make a motion we approve this.
I second it.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Malone, purchase, acquisition of real estate, does any of this have to be discussed in executive session?
It doesn't have to be, but it may be, according to one of the exceptions to the Open Meetings Act. There are obvious reasons why discussing the purchase of real estate in executive session is allowed so that you can make decisions about what you're going to offer and that sort of thing. If this is just a fixed price and there's no proposal for negotiating, that's up to your discretion. Somebody could move to...
So, so for the public's benefit, what is, what is the amount?
$160,000 is what we have agreed upon. The, the advertised price of it was 178, 178,000.
And the property has been quiet titled, has, it's got clear title?
It's all ready to go at this point.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
One, one thing that I would ask the, the commission to include, if it is of a mind to approve this purchase, that there be specified that we get a title policy from the seller, so that we know we have good title, and that there be some discussion, and again, this could either be an open session or executive session, about who's paying closing costs, how those are being divided up. Apparently, you've already had preliminary discussions with the seller. I don't know if those issues have been addressed, but from the legal department's standpoint, to effectuate the conclusion of this transaction, there's going to have to be a signed purchase agreement. And that purchase agreement is going to have to identify things like who pays closing costs, that sort of thing.
Commissioner Fambro.
I amend my motion to include the recommendation by the attorney.
Is there a friendly second to the amendment?
I will second that.
So, again, Mr. Chairman, I, I mean, I love the idea of purchasing additional property and all, but Mr. Malone, do you, is it your recommendation, then, that we do go ahead with giving it a, a yes vote at this point? Or are there things that still need to be clarified?
There, there are a couple of things that still need to be clarified. I would ask that the closing, closing costs be identified, who's going to pay closing costs, and that there be a requirement for title policy.
Mr. Driscoll, is there a intention to enter into a purchase agreement for this property?
It's the reason I'm here, is I, whatever we need to do to make this thing happen, my department is stagnated since 2008, and I basically cannot move forward. I've got funds sitting in there that I can't expend because I do not have a station.
Who's going to prepare the purchase agreement?
At this point, Colwell Banker has, has, has got everything. At this point, I have not entered a purchase agreement on it at this point because I didn't know whether I could expend the funds or not. That's why I'm here to, to, to ask this. So I guess my suggestion is you guys tell me what I need to do, and I'll, I'll go get it done. I mean, I'll have it this afternoon.
Mr. Chairman, obviously, the legal department wants to review any purchase agreement. I don't want the seller to prepare the purchase agreement without our review. So I think that it should be, again, if this is going to be approved, it's fine to approve the sales amount, include a requirement that there be a title commitment paid, title commitment and ultimately a title policy paid for by the seller, and then make some detailed decision in the vote with regard to closing costs.
Well, can we make our approval pending your review of the purchase agreement?
Absolutely. Or you can say subject to approval by the county attorney. But I still need the details on who's going to pay closing costs, because those are always negotiable.
Right, and that'll be included in the purchase agreement?
No doubt.
So, Mr. Chairman, just for clarity, it's a purchase agreement that we are going to be approving at this point?
Well, that ultimately approves the sale if the terms of the purchase agreement are complied with by the, both the seller and the buyer.
So, so the vote today can be on the item that's on the agenda, but, but the motion should include pending approval of the legal department's review of the purchase agreement.
And I, I must not be doing a very good job, Mr. Chairman, of articulating the point. I, it's not up to me to decide how the, how closing costs are going to be spent. That's a policy decision for this commission to make, and I just need the commission. I mean, normally, the seller would provide the, would pay for a title commitment, title policy, and any surveys necessary in connection with the title commitment and its title policy. And while it's often negotiable, the other closing costs are often split. But I need to know what should be in the purchase agreement with regard to the closing costs.
Mr. Chairman, Russ, I don't know what closing cost would be, but do you have money identified that you could pay half of if that's what the agreement is?
You know, you guys, last December's meeting, you guys moved money around in line items for me to give me $180,000 in this line item account for this exact reason, because we had not settled on a price on, on the property yet, and they're asking price of 178,000, I could cover it out of this line item. Okay? So I've got up to $180,000 in this line item for this expenditure. So whatever, whatever costs are associated to it, I can cover. Okay? The, the line item in is, is available to, to cover those, those costs.
If I could amend my amendment to allow Mr. Driscoll up to a, and not to exceed $10,000 of his half of the closing cost, because he's got that money identified. Commissioner O'Donnell, you?
I'd like the motion restated with Mr. Malone's recommendations, so we're, we're clear on this.
I, I think that, I think that Mr. Malone's point is that title insurance is normally paid for by the seller, and, and that, that he's suggesting that that might be a policy decision that we make to, to ensure that title insurance is paid by the seller, which is probably the, the largest single item except for the, the realtor. So...
Actually, Mr. Chairman, there's also the survey costs. If you're going to get title insurance, more than likely, unless it was surveyed recently.
Just surveyed recently, yes.
Yeah. And that would still involve having to have a improvements survey, I would say.
Yeah, those are relatively inexpensive. And, and so the, the normal cost allocation is seller pays title insurance and the remaining is, is divided equally.
Well, pays title insurance and any associated survey costs.
Right.
Probably not more than 10%.
Um, true.
So, Mr. Chairman, what would be the cleanest way to do this? Mr. Malone?
Chairman, should I weigh in on that?
Please, help us out here. We're hungry.
It, it appears that the commission is inclined to approve this request, and so I would suggest that the, um, motion be to approve the purchase of the property with the seller providing title commitment and, and title policy and any associated survey costs, and the parties, um, splitting other closing costs and the-
Not to exceed?
Whatever, not to exceed the amount that you guys choose, um, subject to the county attorney agreeing to the terms of a purchase agreement.
Nail it.
Nail it.
I make a motion to exactly what he just said.
I second it.
With the dollar amount being up to ten thousand, because he has that in his budget.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? If not, call for the vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Good luck, Mr. Driscoll. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez, for your work in this also. Now, we need a motion to adjourn for lunch.
So, I'll second.
Motion, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I motioned.
Call for the vote, please?
Yes.
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 Yes. Ready to come back into session? Do we have a motion?
Motion to come back into session, Mr. Chair. It is one twenty-three.
I'll go ahead and second.
Call for the vote?
Yes.
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 I believe we ended at ten C, which is a discussion regarding the approval of Resolution two, two thousand fifteen-ten, uh, and this is to appoint the Taos County Board of Registration, our clerk, Anna Martinez. Thank you, Anna.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners. Um, I come before you to get approval for Resolution twenty fifteen-ten, uh, calls for a board of registration. It's a statutory requirement. Um, it's for our purge that we'll be having. Um, we haven't purged voters since two thousand nine, so hopefully we can get as many as we can that haven't voted in a while off those rolls. So I just need approval. The names that I chose are, um, are people who have served on the board before and so are familiar with the process.
Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, so what happens, um, basically from, uh, any party, whether it be Republican, Democrat, if they're not voting, if they don't show up? This is just for the general election, the primary?
So what happens with the purge is that, um, we're supposed to purge people every four years. So if in two years, normally what happens is the state will send out little notifications, um, asking if you're still at that same address, um, and if you respond to it, then you remain as active. If we don't get a response, or if for some reason, um, it gets undeliverable, we mark those people as inactive. If they were to vote the next election, then that would move them back up to active. If not, it gets them ready for the purge, which would happen in the next two years. So the board will come on and they will, um, have a list of people who are ready to be purged. They will go through our voter rolls, and they will have their entire voter history, and then at that point, they will, um, decide whether or not they, they should be removed or remain.
Right. So move, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Call for the vote?
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Thank you. Onto eleven, Department Matters. We have a discussion regarding the approval of a lighting upgrade to the Filimon Sanchez Park. Anita Padilla.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. You have before you, um, a purchase of, it's not a purchase, it's a contract, a CES contract for Phoenix Mechanical to start upgrading the lighting at the Filimon Sanchez Park. This, um, purchase order is actually broke out into two, two items. One is the main, the main panel and the breakers, and then field number two. That would bring that, this purchase, to twenty-seven thousand six hundred and twenty-seven dollars and ninety-five cents, leaving a balance of five-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars and eighty-six cents, which we're going to buy light bulbs with, and that will fully extend this grant.
Commissioner Fambro.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I didn't see a completion date on this, and I know that everything gets fired up over there, uh, roughly May first. Can this be completed prior to?
Uh, uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Fambro, yes. As long as I get this approved, I can get the purchase order, 'cause, um, I already have the CES contract.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner?
This is for a light pole and not lights?
Um, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, no, this is a full lighting upgrade. So we're doing the main panel, which has all the breakers in it, and then field number two. We're not doing any poles, we're just, just doing the lighting itself.
And will the lighting be LED to conserve energy?
Chairman, Commissioners, uh, actually, it's gonna be some of the feeders and whatnot to the light poles, but there are no new lighting fixtures at all. It's the main service, some new conductors to the fields, and some, and I think another breaker panel for the, um, concession stand. But no lighting fixtures at all and no pole work.
Mr. Chairman, I so move. We approve this request.
I'll go ahead and second.
Discussion? Um, yeah, the, the service itself was deficient. Sometimes, in the fourth inning, the lights would go off, everybody had to take a break, and then-
The lights are too small.
Right.
Not enough breakers.
Well, it, it'll be a really good upgrade. Everybody will be pleased, uh, as the season gets going. Right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Um, Anita, uh, as I understand the CES process, you have to start it with a purchase order, and that's why you're asking for approval of the purchase order. They ultimately, as a result of that purchase order, prepare a three-party contract, and is that the process that will work here?
Mr. Chairman, um, Mr. Malone, what happens now is the vendor sends a quote and CES contract. Then CES sends us, uh, the approval to get the purchase order, and after we get the purchase order, that's what starts the contract work.
Okay, so do, do you want to be able to move forward without having to bring the actual contract back to the commission? Because as it stands now, before the contract can be signed, that will have to come back to the commission.
Um, Mr. Chairman, Comi-, um, Mr. Malone, with the CES contract, we, those have not been coming back before the commission.
Okay, well, they're not-
We get, we get the approval of the, of the actual purchase. It goes to Elsa. She initiates the purchase order, and we use the contract from CES.
Right, but the CES contract requires that somebody from the county sign?
We haven't been doing that, sir. There isn't a, a line for the county to sign on.
Then maybe it's changed since the last time I saw it. Okay.
Could be.
Um, let me make this suggestion to move this process forward, if, if it's appropriate to whoever made the motion, that if the CES contract does require a county signature, that the county manager be authorized to sign it, as long as it's been reviewed by the county attorney.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I amend my motion to have the county manager sign the contract if it is necessary.
A friendly second.
Thank you.
Can you remind us the, uh, source of the funding again?
This was a legislative appropriation from two thousand and thirteen.
Capital Outley.
Capital Outley, correct. Severance Tax Fund.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Call for the vote?
Yes.
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 Yes. Onto B. This is a discussion regarding the Rio Fernando Fire Department. Oh, no, no. We already did that. That's Mr. Driscoll that we moved up. And, uh, so now we are going on to C, which we haven't done yet. And this is the, uh, request for the reappointment of the Arts and Artifacts Review Committee. Richard Sanchez.
Chairman, Commissioners, um, in front of you, it should be in your pockets, is a brief memorandum from Ms. Elam, uh, about, by resolution, um, the board appoints, uh, interested parties to the arts committee. Uh, all parties that, all the committee members right now from the public showed interest in, uh, remaining on the board, and this is, uh, we can either, you guys can approve them, or we would have to put it out to public, again, for in, other interested parties, but all the existing committee members would like to continue another year of service on that committee. So this is just for your approval. I don't know what you-
Mr. Chairman, they, they've done well. They, maybe, Richard, for the benefit of the, uh, you commissioners, talk a little bit about what they've done.
Um, over the last year and a half, um, all the historic pictures here, um, have been purchased through, uh, some of the construction funds. Also, Mr. Hui Lee has, uh, written one grant, and we purchased some more, and hung more in the courthouse. Uh, we've been involved with the Ted Agri Estate to get Flight of the Wind, which looks like that's gonna come together. We've also issued an RFP and, uh, had several local artists, uh, respond to it, and it was awarded to John Swazza. We're in meetings with John right now to, uh, finalize the contract terms, uh, and hopefully he can stall on our piece that was approved by the commission. Uh, they wanna continue, uh, with, there's still some funds and some more grant money that, uh, for more historical art pictures, and, um, just keep moving forward.
And is it your recommendation to, uh, keep the current, uh, participation?
That is my recommendation. They're all very, uh, involved and very, um, very helpful and, and knowledgeable in, when it comes to art and art in public places.
Mr. Chairman, um, there's also, um, the county manager has designated one county commissioner. Um, in the past, I've participated in some of the-
In some of the meetings, the facilities director.
If there was someone else that wanted to do it.
But, y- any of the commissioners are more than welcome. Um, we just need the name. Ms. Elam sends out, uh, agendas. It is a public meeting. Uh, currently, I'm chairing it for, uh, Manager Archuleta, and, um, I'd be more than willing to stay on also if, if you guys prefer, if you so wish.
Are you interested in continuing, Commissioner Ramirez?
Um, not necessarily. I, I, they've done an awesome job and, um-
Says one county commissioner, would, uh, Commissioner Fambro, 'cause it says one?
Hmm.
Maybe that's what-
I thought it meant, but I, I think I could be wrong. That could be it.
Did you slip on some ice and hit your head out there?
Do we have a motion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner.
Is this something that's not on the agenda we have to bring back, or can we make the appointment today?
No, I think that we can make the appointment today. Isn't that right, Mr. Malone? Yes, you can make the appointment. It's on the agenda as a, as a decision item.
Then that being said, Mr. Chairman, I would like to recommend the appointment of Commissioner Fambro, since it is in his district.
I'm, I'm taking notes here. I just want you guys to know that. I'll make sure we come back to these minutes.
We have a, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, does the motion approve the rest of the committee as well?
Oh, yes, I amend that motion to include the appointment, uh, to approve the, uh, selection of the, uh, committee members. Thank you.
I'll go ahead and second, if no one has.
I am honored by the, uh, faith that my fellow commissioners have bestowed on me today, and I'll gladly take this. Also, again, Mark.
Thank you, Commissioner Fambro. Call for the vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
I think I'll abstain, since my partner is one of the members. Although, it's no direct advantage to me, but, um, I'll abstain in any event.
And, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if it's appropriate, but we were handed this public art and historic preservation, um, agenda for Saturday, of which the Art and Artifacts Committee is a sponsor. Do you recommend, is anyone going? Do you recommend a particular time to go if we can't go all day?
Um, it's gonna be open to the public all day. Uh, it's a lot of, um, really neat, uh, histori- history for not just Taos, but all of northern New Mexico for WPA. Paul Figueroa is, uh, is doing that, and, uh, I'll, I'll probably be there either Friday or Saturday, but, uh, from what I've seen, it's, it's, it's something that, uh, is educational, it's really cool to see.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I, I'd just like to thank the staff, uh, Richard, especially you, for chairing this, and Gina, and Mark. Um, great job out there. You guys have really moved this Arts and Artifacts Committee along really well, and thank you, and I commend you for that.
Thank you for all.
Thank you, Richard. Next is D. This is a, uh, consideration of a reorganization of the Adult Detention Department. On, we have, uh, Jana Gonzalez, our director, and Renee Weber, our Human Resources Director.
Members of the board?
Afternoon.
Uh, we've worked diligently to put this plan together. Uh, due to the vacancy and now elimination of the Chief of Security position, we're able to allow the creation of another lieutenant position, which would allow us to have two lieutenants and define them into an operations section and an administrative section. Um, there is a difference in pay grade. The administrative lieutenant will be at a pay grade twenty, and the operations lieutenant will be at a pay grade twenty-one. The reduction in the temporary line item allows for a pay grade change for sergeants from a level sixteen to a level seventeen, which generates more of an incentive for promotion. Currently, there's only sixty cents difference between a corporal and a sergeant, and quite a bit of supervisory difference. Um, pay grade will allow for a dollar twenty-two separation and a better expansion of the career ladder. Uh, the reduction in temporary line item also allows for creation of a full-time clerk at a pay grade eight, and a reclassification of the current administrative assistant to an office manager level. Respectfully request approval.
Chairman, um, with regards to the detention officers, three vacant positions?
Yes, that's correct.
Um, and are you planning to fill those?
Yes, we are.
Time soon?
Yeah, it's been, it's been open in an ongoing basis. Um, it was listed as a temporary status, which allows us to better expand the, um, probationary period. However, we are going to open those up as full-time positions.
And there is a budget for them. They're in the budget.
I make a motion to approve.
I'll go ahead and second, Mr. Chairman.
Discussion? Discussion, Commissioner Fambro.
Um, we're certainly doing good in this org chart by not being top-heavy, but I'm, I'm, I'm concerned that there's a lot of administrative stuff for, that that's what the new detention clerk will be assisting, and a lot of the administrative stuff. Just curious, Renee, if you could, uh, how many administrative assistants are in the Sheriff's Department?
Uh, currently, there is one office manager, and there is a-
We'd kind of be in line with that now, different titles, kind of different functions, but it would be pretty balanced.
Similar. Um, the basis and justification for this reclass for the office managers because of the amount of payroll people she has. That's a huge-
Yeah, it's-
That's thirty-eight employees.
Excuse me, I always like to see the laddering effect take place in the county. It gives people an opportunity to move up when they've shown that they can do the job, and so, uh, thank you for that initiative. We have a motion and a second on the table. Is there any further discussion? In that case, we'll call for the vote.
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both for your hard work. Onto budgetary matters. Twelve A is a discussion regarding approval of DFA Resolution requesting, uh, an adjustment of the final budget to an account for an increase of revenues for the Public Works Department. Leandro?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, um, the Public Works Department did some cleaning, and they found enough scrap metal to take, and they earned twelve thousand, let me give you the exact amount, um, twelve thousand seven hundred seventy-three dollars and seventy cents. So we would like to increase their budget by that amount, um, for both the revenue and on the expenditure side, we're going to increase their- We're going to increase their equipment line item, so they could purchase snow plows for the two new trucks that were purchased last year for District 5 and District 2, I believe. And so, we've already actually, from some of the money they had in that line item, have purchased the, or encumbered, and I think we have ordered the plows, and now we're just reimbursing that line item for them to meet any other needs they have in the future. I recommend approval. This was a great opportunity that they had, and they were able to make the most out of it, and we're putting it right back into their budget for their needs.
Well, it's great. Always like to see the road budget fattened up a little bit, and it was a really good initiative to clean up that mess and derive a little bit of income from it.
Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Gallegos.
I do believe that former Commissioner Larry Sanchez, on some of those community cleanup days, is where some of this stuff might have been accumulated as well. I'm not sure, Mr. Cordova, if that's true, but I know that when they had a cleanup day in Cuesta, that a lot of the general trash was getting thrown in the dumpster, and any of the recyclable material was put on a, on a second trailer, and I think, Edward, is that part of how some of that had been able to be recovered as well?
Uh, yeah. Or- The cleanup cycle, as far as springtime or fall, maybe, is, the commission wishes that that might be, or those cleanup days that come around may help generate some more revenue somehow for the department, so.
And I'd like to thank Solid Waste for assisting Public Works in doing this. They turned to Edward, and Edward helped them out, and they, they were able to do this initiative, and the money came back, so I'd like to thank them as well.
Give you a chance for breaking those new gloves you got.
Right.
Commissioners, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Call for the vote?
Yes.
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 Yes. B is a discussion to request a transfer of expenditures to allocate a utility expense from the New Mexico Aging and Long Term Senior Companion Budget to the Senior Program Fund.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, yeah, as you saw during our work study, the senior programs have multiple budgets. We just misallocated one of our utility expenses, and we were just basically correcting it. This is an accounting fix for the amount of $478.04, and I recommend approval.
Commissioners, for approval. We have a motion?
Second.
Yes.
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 Yes. Mr. Cordova, the next one is budget adjustment for Public Works.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the public's work, the Public Works Department needs to purchase, it's called perma patch, asphalt patch, for potholes. They have run up on their maintenance of grounds and roadways budget, so they're moving money from some savings they have in vehicles, furniture, and equipment, in the amount of $8,000, so they can go ahead and purchase this stuff and start patching some potholes. And they have the money to do it. I recommend approval.
There's definitely a need for it, and this is a different material than the cold mix that they've been using?
Yes, as I understand it, it is, and it's a little more resilient, and it's more suitable for this time of year. It actually stays in the ground.
I saw the Highway Department gave me a little-
A bag.
Yeah, apparently they come in bags, and we do have some money in that maintenance of ground, of roadways, but we've encumbered it for base core and cold mix, and the other things that we've encumbered it for, so they hadn't-
Mr. Chairman, is this something that was being recommended by Earl?
Yes, yes, it was. He came and asked if we could do it, and I said, "If you have the money." He found the money, and said it was essential for his department to-
So where is it going to go?
I don't have the answers to that. I'm sure there's plenty of potholes for it to go in, but I, I don't have the exact list.
Because I had spoken to him earlier, and he said that he was actually looking for a material that was better than, than what is being suggested today.
Either way, he'll have the money and the funds in that line item to make the purchase, and I would allow him to make the recommendation, if that's what's best for the Public Works. I just want to make sure he has the money to do what he needs to do.
Commissioner Fambro.
Commissioner Romero, if it's the stuff, I, I was fortunate enough to get a demonstration with the Highway Department of this new stuff in these bags that they're using, and it's, it's really nice how it goes down, and I mean, almost instantly, it's, it's there. So I like that stuff.
I, I wonder if it, it is different than what we've been using.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is new to the area, is what I understand.
I think so. Big difference. The, you know, the cold mix that we use, those guys just keep trying to catch up, because, you know, especially now with the, the snow and the thawing and the freezing, they're popping up all over the place, and, and the cold mix is better, it saves tires, but this is going to last longer. I'm, I'm really optimistic about it, and glad that they're moving ahead with it.
And if it works well, we'll probably budget more next year, and make sure that he has a purchase order in place for it next year, ahead of time, but it is a new product.
Commissioners, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call for the vote?
Yes.
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 Yes. And one more regarding a budget adjustment for Solid Waste.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the Solid Waste Department has been utilizing a temp for the Costilla, the Costilla Transfer Station. The permanent employee there had suffered, I believe, a heart attack and had some medical issues. He's out on disability leave right now, and in order to be able to continue to staff that, we're using a temp position. We've depleted the temp budget, so now we're asking to increase it by $5,500, taking it out of buildings and structures and street lighting, so that this temp position can continue until there's a determination on the long-term disability of the individual that is a full-time.
What is the amount?
$5,500. I do recommend approval, and Mr. Martinez is here for any questions.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Call for the vote?
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cordova. Now we go to the County Manager's Report, and the first one is Appointment of a Member to the Holy Cross Hospital Nominating Committee for a One-Year Term.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I believe you have the letter from Holy Cross Hospital in front of you that was addressed to me on January 9, 2015. Commissioner Langenhorne has served on this nominating committee, and the Board of Trustees is once again asking for prospective members from the Taos County Commission to actually serve on this board for their nominating committee.
Yeah, Commissioner Fambro.
I, I served on this before when I was, so you can probably guess who put me on it, but I would recommend that Mr. Blankenhorne continue if he so wishes.
Thank you, yes, I would like to continue.
On the form of a motion.
Second. Second, that motion.
Discussion? Call for the vote?
Yes.
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 Yes, thank you for that. Next, Steve, is a discussion regarding whether Taos County should pursue a professional services contract regarding the remediation and closeout of the Chevron Mine Cleanup, Superfund Cleanup.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, since the announcement of the closure of Chevron Mine, Taos County staff has been working diligently to try to involve themselves in the process. As many of the commissioners know, Taos County has not been allotted the opportunity because we had no record of being on record, basically, when the mine was in operation, of being involved in what they call the ROD, the Record of Decision. Since then, we have been speaking with numerous individuals across the federal level and state level. We've had meetings with the New Mexico Environment Department, the Energy and Minerals and Natural Resource Department, the U.S. Environment Protection Agency, or the EPA out of Texas, and the administration from the Chevron Mining, in conjunction with the town of Taos and Cuesta on these events. Last week, we had a meeting with the EPA. There was actually a series of attorneys, I believe Mr. Malone said there was four attorneys, three or four attorneys that were here representing the different entities and our involvement with the closure of the Chevron Mine. And so I'm actually asking for guidance from the commission, is, you know, do we want to take this further and possibly hire an outside consultant, like WH Pacific, who has put in a proposal to Taos County to represent us? The issue is that the technical knowledge that's needed in order to understand the closure, what the impacts of those are, and how Taos County will protect its interest and its constituents' interest in the future. I had taken some notes and written some down that I wanted to just read off to the commission, and these were notes that we've been discussing with, with the EPA and everybody else, as we've been going through and looking at that. But part of the concerns that we have is the overall health level within the community, water contamination, ground contamination. We have obviously families leaving the community. Cuesta represented that there was about 20% drop in enrollment at the Cuesta School District, which obviously means less money coming into the community. Economic development has come to a halt, except for the subsidiaries like Telski Valley and some of the events that they're doing. Schools are losing kids, laying off teachers, grocery receipts tax have dropped, property values, you know, because we're a superfund, and what the effect of the superfund's going to be on property tax and people moving into this community as a superfund site. Those are all questions that, again, we have little to no technical knowledge on, because this is the first time the Chevron Mine has closed within our community, but it's also, they're only going to close once, and so we're trying to figure out how we're going to get this right. There is a very big possibility that we will never be allowed at the table. That's a reality of what Chevron has said, that's a reality of what the EPA has said, and, and that, that could very possibly be a reality of where we're at. But my opinion, on some level, we have to try to take every effort and every precaution that we can in, in order to try to get a voice at the table. And Commissioner Gallegos, you might want to chime in a little bit. You've been involved yourself in Deputy Manager Haramio with the closure and Cuesta Mine, and at this point, Cuesta does have a seat at the table, but there are land use regulation impacts, there are contamination impacts that happen far beyond Cuesta to our, to our communities. And so if there's a contamination in the Red River, that flows down the Rio Grande all the way down to, you know, Texas, or wherever, Mexico, wherever it flows down to. So those are real concerns. There's concerns that have been brought up by constituents of actually leaving a lot of the track, a lot of the metal. Chevron Mining has said they're going to pump that water out. There's concerns about railroad ties and the curing mechanisms that's used on railroad ties being left down there. Again, if the water's pumped out, the wells are working fine, the pumps are working fine, then that contamination might not happen, but if it's done for eternity, at what point will there be underground contamination in those issues? And it's just a huge technical thing that I'm not sure we, we totally understand, the process and how that all works, and Commissioner Gallegos?
Mr. Chair, do you want me, should I go down there? I mean, it's hard, I can't-
Up to you, Commissioner.
Your call, Commissioner, whatever is your pleasure.
It's just difficult to swing my neck back and forth, I guess. Can I, I'll put the other hat on today. I'll put, I'll put my mayor's hat on, and I believe that the, the pursuing of looking for additional consulting for another firm for the county would be important as well, only for the fact that, as the village of Cuesta is trying to have a lot of things that are going on, as well as the county's properties being involved, you know, we've got to look at, at how the impacts are going to be when Chevron Mining is going ahead and moving forward with trying to do some of the three-foot cover that's on the tailings facility. Where is that land going to come from? Where is that dirt going to come from? Is it going to come from property they have down in Sunshine? What kind of burial pit are they going to leave? Is it going to be near some residences? Is it going to be around areas that, that are going to affect wildlife? Addition to Mr. Archuleta's comments on the underground, you know, there is a big concern that, you know, once these shafts get decommissioned, there's no ventilation there, so what happens? There's condensation that's going to affect the metal there, that's going to affect the copper that's down there, the railroad ties, everything that, that seems to not want to be a big factor, they're going to say that it's okay. You know, we need the EPA to come and tell the Taos County residents that, that's fine being down there, and they, and they have paperwork and documentation showing that that's the way they do business. That's the way they do superfund cleanups. If that's the way they do superfund cleanups, then I think that that's where we're going to have a bigger issue with, you know, exposing how they do business nowadays. And I think that as a commission, sitting with an opportunity to still have, like, like Mr. Archuleta said, maybe not be able to sit at the table, but you're right there at the door, waiting for them to come out of that office or that meeting, and say, "Here, prove it to us on, in this level, at the county level, what we can do, and what you're going to do, and how you're going to remedy these issues that we have concerning our whole county." So, you know, I feel that in, in the villages' perspective, we have some good representation, but, you know, our representation takes care of a lot of what village of Cuesta's needs are, and rightfully, that's what, what Cuesta's concerned about, is what they need to do to take care of those citizens. Sitting on the other side, as a commissioner, that being part of my district, I would feel that I would, you know, the more opportunities that we have to get more information with other organizations, or other engineering firms, or technical firms, brings, brings easier closure, you know, and it's all transparent, so, you know, that consideration is what I'd ask the commissioner today to consider.
Thank you, Commissioner Gallegos.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I'm not here asking today for financial funding of this. This is something that staff would work towards to make recommendations. We would obviously have to, if the commission chose to go this route, we would have to do an RFP to see who would actually respond to that RFP, and what they, that representation would be, but I'm just not sure if we want to continue moving in that direction, or we don't want to continue moving in that direction. We have rattled a lot of cages at this point. We have got some attention at this point. They know that Taos County's here, they know that Taos County's alive and asking questions. The issue then becomes, how far do we want to take this, and where do we want to move on that? Obviously, at some point, if Taos County's looking at filing a lawsuit, or any of those things, we could discuss that in executive session. My concern is, I don't want to, you know, I want a policy decision from the commission as to where we stand, and how we continue to move forward in, in that direction. And I'll stand for any questions at this time.
So, Mr. Chairman, I know that we had met with some individuals last, last year, towards the end of the last year, who I, I can't remember-
It was actually the EPA that came out of Texas.
So these were individuals that represent EPA, and they had made some suggestions as, to who to hire. And so what qualifications are these individuals, having to be attorneys, engineers, mine specialists?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, that would actually be a policy decision that we would, we would actually look at for a scope of work. My interpretation of that would be that if we want to look at professionals that have dealt with mine closures in the past, there's actually fiscal impacts, along with physical impacts, that happen to a community when a mine closes. Again, you know, there was some gearing up, and again, Commissioner, Commissioner Gallegos and Deputy Manager Haramio can talk about some of the issues that people were building trailer parks in, in Cuesta, they were building parking lots, they were building office space. They spent a lot of money. I know that Kikarson Electric also reserved some grid to make sure that they had enough electrical lines going over there, and electrical current going to the mine for its continued operations. Those are some of the fiscal impacts that, you know, Taos County has, and also the smaller communities have with the closure. We also have equipment being taken out of Taos County. There was a huge auction, a lot of equipment was trucked out of here, as, as the commission well knows. Those have impacts on our roads, have impacts on our bridges, so if we needed to measure the impact of those, and, and ask, go back and ask for some superfund money in order to help us maintain those roads, those are, that's a, you know, an engineering design that, or a company that would have to come in and measure what those impacts are, and how many trucks are going up into those areas. It's not something that- It's not something that we had designed our roads to do. We have other impacts like if a disaster happens up there right now, you know, how many ambulances are we going to need to respond? Who's going to keep the roads open? How's the sheriff's department going to react to the emergency? There's just a lot of issues that we've never had to deal with because there's never actually been a closure of that mine. And so those are the things that we've just thought about and said, well, what about this and what about that? And those are the questions that we're asking now. That has nothing to do with the contamination, has nothing to do with the vegetation, has nothing to do with the ground cover. Again, if we're going to do a three foot ground cover over the tailings dump, how is that going to be secured so you don't have the blowing dust going everywhere from that? And how are we also going to make sure that that tailings dump doesn't leak into the Red River that is right next to it? Or into the ground wells that are right next into it? Is that, is there plastic on bottom of those tailings dumps? How long is that plastic available for? I don't know. I mean, those are. So we could, you know, and I know that the fear of the commission also is that we could get into a multimillion dollar issue here and obviously Taos County doesn't have that. And so, you know, at some point, we need to figure out what's going to be the policy? How far are we going to take this? Do we still just keep, you know, rattling cages and asking questions and getting anybody's attention that we can? Or do we want to bring an expert in that could help guide us through this process that that has dealt with other mine closures across the United States? That's the question.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Archuleta, I think that, you know, possibility is if we were to hire a firm that that firm have the capabilities and the expertise in reviewing what the record of decision is, how the super fund operates, and a lot of the other things that we can't control as a commission because we weren't players in the table. But if they can kind of give that information to the commission, then we know how to set ourselves up for what's going to be coming down five, 10 years from now. Because, you know, for us to try and review binders and binder loads of stuff that we were not familiar with is just going to be, you know, we'll be flooded and we won't ever catch that tail, you know? So maybe we should just look at a firm that can have that capability of reviewing or has expertise in looking at records of decisions or closing out of mines. And that kind of might narrow down who we're really looking for as far as kind of workmanship that we'll get.
Mr. Chairman, are you thinking about doing this jointly within with the town of Taos and, I mean, the county and Village of Cuesta or the county?
I know that the Village of Cuesta, at this time, we have our technical support and our expertise already on board. I don't know how open it would be for the Village of Cuesta group to pass that information on or if it's public record for the commission to handle that. I wouldn't believe that at this time I could say yes or no to what the village could collaboratively work with the county on. I'd have to ask a village's attorney on that. But, you know, like I said, I think that the information's out there is just trying to understand the language in there is what we.
Mr. Chairman, I think one of the key things that kind of came out of that meeting that we had last year was that we would be guaranteed a a seat at the table. And that's something that the county has never really been able to to do at this point, correct?
That's correct. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, Commissioner Romero, we had a meeting last week with a group of the individuals that came back from the EPA and basically what they're saying is that the county won't have a seat at the table is is what their, you know, their analysis of of that was. There's still some discussion about our land use regulations and what applies and what doesn't apply and at what point those apply. But I I still feel that there's a series of issues that haven't even been considered or discussed. I don't know what the the amount of money that we would need in order to impact that because I just, we've never done this before. Everything that I've seen reference to technical support really addresses what Cuesta has been requesting. I'll give you an example of that. There was a spill that occurred into the Red River of tailings that the State Environment Department basically got a million dollars for in order to repair that spill and what happened with that spill. When I asked at what level was that measured and what was the impact to Taos County, they said, well, we only went as far as the the fish hatchery or where the Red River ends. And I said, so was there something magical that happens as soon as it entered the Rio Grande that that actual spill didn't continue downstream into San Cristo, La Roya Hondo and all the other areas that Taos County deals with? And they just basically said, you know, they're answering the technical questions that Cuesta is answering because the Red River flows through Cuesta and not necessarily any of the questions that Taos County is asking for their constituents down river.
So, Mr. Chairman, I guess the the question or the thoughts that I have is what do we want to accomplish by doing this? I know that I attended a a meeting last fall out of Taos County and they were talking about the mine closure and one of the individuals that was presenting said that Taos County was basically around the table like a vulture and that basically all of the the money had been dispersed and they knew what they were going to do already and, you know, he kind of alluded to the county as a vulture and a few other entities that are wanting some money out of it. And one of the things that I said was, well, there's health issues that are going to have to be dealt with that are worth more than whatever Cuesta got, four, five million dollars or whatever it is. There are health issues that are going to have to be dealt with in the future, way after the mine is is gone. There's wildlife issues that are going to have to be dealt with. And like you questioned a while ago, where is the topsoil going to come from to be able to to cover so much ground that has been contaminated? Is it going to come from lands that the the mine currently owns? Is it going to come from other areas that are near neighborhoods that are going to create just as much damage to the environment as as the mine may have done so already?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Commissioner Romero, you're correct. And in the aspect of, you know, 10 years down the line, what's the impact and what's going to happen? And Commissioner Gallegos is also correct on where the where's the dirt going to come from? How that's going to be distributed and how that's going to be put on there? There's also other implications that we've had to deal with and have been asking questions about. Recently, we've had the demolition of some buildings. Although we issued the demolition permits, there's some asbestos in those buildings and the containment of that asbestos. And then also where it's going to be dropped. I did talk with the mayor about it and at one point, they actually had an agreement with the town of Taos to drop that demolition in our landfill. After I questioned the contamination, it actually went back and said, you know, you guys are going to have to find an area that actually deals with contaminated remains or debris, shall I say better for a better word? And Taos, the Taos County landfill is not an area for that. There's a lot of issues, you're correct. And and as the super fund continues throughout its 20, 30 year life within Taos County, the concerns of wildlife, animal, even the visual impacts of that mine and, you know, how is that going to be put back in? Will be left up to the hands of people from the EPA and other areas that don't actually live here that actually make those decisions. And that's why I thought it was important to bring it to the commission and to say that, you know, if we can have some skin in the game and we can make recommendations or at least pass ideas by us, I mean, at least as Commissioner Gallegos states, we may not be inside the doors, but we can be standing outside the doors to say we don't agree with that or we do agree with it.
Mr. Chairman, I think we owe it to our constituents to make sure that they are protected because we not only represent the ones outside of the municipality, but those within the municipality, they're all part of the county. And at some point or another, it seems to me like they need to answer to a lot of what's going to be done or what they intend to do and they need to answer to the county, whether it's the planning department or other departments that that we have here at the county.
Excuse me, there's a few different issues here. The the first one that we've kind of touched on is, you know, how much coverage over the tailings and what are you going to pull up out of the ground? All those things are currently being negotiated. They base it on the record of decision, right, which took years and years to do. And then the negotiating, it's confidential negotiations according to federal law, right, according to super fund law. And you've got the EPA from the feds and you've got their counterpart with the state and you've got Chevron. And they are trying to negotiate all of these technical details that have been poured over by experts from hired by different people. And once they come to an agreement, then it goes back out to the public before the judge signs it. Once the judge signs it in what they call the consent decree, it's over. Whatever the judge signs that's part of the consent decree, that's what will get done for a billion dollars over the course of the next 10 years. And so, you know, as as has been commented, it may well be important, probably is important for the county to have some technical assistance once they come back to the public. I don't, and Mr. Malone can correct me if I'm wrong, I don't, I don't see any way we're going to, well, and we've already admitted that, that we're not going to get a seat at that negotiating table. We just want to be on the, at the exit door. So I think that that is something of of interest to the county. You know, it would be great if we could somehow join in with the contract for the current technical advisor. And again, Commissioner Gallegos, Mayor Gallegos said he'd look into that for us. I don't, I don't know how long it's going to be before the public really gets a chance to comment on the negotiations. But it's it's something that we probably need to know. Now, the contractor, I was at some of those meetings, the contractor who came up and said they could help us, they were referencing another aspect, which is the natural resource damages. And I think you made reference to that with the water flowing out of Cuesta. I think that that is part of the natural resource damages. Those damages have already been established at something like $3 million. But there's a stay, there's been a temporary stay of that being solidified, which Amigos Bravos actually accomplished. And Brian Shields wrote a really comprehensive account of why he believed, they believed, Amigos Bravos and their technical advisors believed that that was not a fair amount. That's another thing that we could try to get involved with. And that was, that was the pitch that these guys were given, these engineers, that was their pitch. We can help you expand the natural resource damages. And then the third one, as you've said, is the LUR, our own LUR. And, you know, I think the manager's done a great job in getting us a seat at that table. So right now, there's currently scheduled, I think, quarterly meetings where EPA comes up, NMED comes up, they fill the room and they answer our questions. They're not ready to admit that we actually have jurisdiction over a special use permitting process because there's a statement within the federal law that says they're exempted. You know, there's, there's always different legal opinions about laws, but I I think that that exemption provision is has been pretty well tested and it would be difficult for us to pursue that. So that we force them into a special use permit for the work that they're doing. They have said that if there's any substantive requirements within your LUR that you want enforced, we will enforce them. So they've agreed to basically comply with the law, but not comply with the process of coming before the Board of County Commissioners to get a permit. And they believe that that's what they're exempted from. So those are the three issues, you know, and
Mr. Chairman.
And I go, I go back to what Commissioner Romero had said initially, which is, you know, we really need to figure out what it is we're trying to accomplish. Because they're all murky issues and the, I know that the proposal that we had, we'd have to go out for an RFP, but it was 10 grand upfront and then quickly building, you know, wouldn't, wouldn't have been much to get up to 50. And and, you know, I'm not adverse to spending the money as long as I believe it's being well spent. Commissioner Romero?
Mr. Chairman, what have other counties done? I mean, certainly we've had mines that have closed in the state of New Mexico and I'm sure that they have maybe not necessarily gotten a seat at the table, but they have fought back for what they believed was right for their constituents. And so maybe if if you asked other counties, again, the Association of Counties going to them and and maybe getting some help through them and see where they've gone as far as mine closures are concerned.
We'll do that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner O'Donnell?
Commissioners, I do support Commissioner Gallegos in that we should pursue a professional contract and I need to be, I would like to be briefed by someone who is knowledgeable and, you know, not be swimming around in the molybdenum waste pile. In relation to that, I have a constituent in my district who and this might might be part of the thing. They are, Tetra Tech is hiring security guards for $12 an hour with no benefits. And I wonder if this is any kind of violation of Davis Bacon wages? And so I have a number. Darrell L. Mason of the EPA, the Special Assistant to the Inspector. This is the person that I was told should be contacted regarding the hiring practices of some of these contractors and how here we have these miners who are being desperate and will take a $12 an hour job with no benefits. And I, I want to know if that's legal. It's those kinds of things that perhaps this professional services contract could look into because these things have long implications for the people in Cuesta. And this gentleman's number is area code 202 5660871 and his cell is 2023024738. And I think if we're talking about protecting the constituents, this goes hand in hand. And it is kind of angered me that these companies come in and hire locals and then don't give them any benefits. So this is one of the reasons why I would support pursuing a professional services contract. Because if we're talking 20, 30 years, these security guards and other auxiliary people are going to be working, that's a lot of money that in a lot of, you know, it's just not fair. I don't think it's fair that that these companies can come in and not. So I really would like to know if if they are exempt from Davis Bacon wages, if, you know, I, those are the kind of things. So that's one of the reasons I would support this.
Commissioner O'Donnell, if you could indulge me just for a second to answer some of the comments that you made. Above that, we've also had a meeting with Ben Ray Luhon because the miners, when they were going to receive the second half of their unemployment wages, before those were actually given or their, it wasn't unemployment, what's it called? The separation wages? Severance pay. They were actually asked to sign a paper that was presented to Congressman Luhon that they would not hold Chevron Mining responsible for any medical concerns that they have in the future like cancer or any of those things. And basically what we were doing was they were signing away their ability to sue Chevron Mining for $5,000 is what they were doing. Which, you know, one, one trip to the doctor referenced cancer in your system is 10 times that amount, much less $5,000.
And Mr. Chairman?
Those kind of practices are.
As we're learning that sometimes maybe we don't win the fight, but we need to fight.
And then there's the, Mr. Chairman, the environmental issue. Again, what about the tribes, all the downstream users? How does it affect Taos Pueblo? How does it affect other tribes further down Rio Grande? Were they ever consulted with? I bet if the tribes were involved, this would put a really good stop to those breaks.
And, Mr. Chairman, there may be some environmental groups that would help fund, help us. There, there, there may be that could help offset some of these professional services costs.
Yeah, that is a possibility. I mean, Amigos Bravos does have quite a
I mean, Amigos Bravo's does have quite a bit of technical support at their disposal. And I think that they have actually done a service to the community by at least postponing the decision on the natural resource damages and coming up with additional claims that the judge can take a look at. We did support that as a board. I think it was at the, pretty close to the end of the last, the last commission's tenure, we supported Mr. Shields and Amigos Bravo's. And I think that the work they did was really quite good, quite extensive, and it was based on a considerable amount of technical advice and, and expertise. So I imagine we could use those in the future. And I guess now, it's just a question of figuring out how that RFP would look, assuming we get a vote to ask you to begin to draft one.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I think that a lot of the comments, I have up to nine here, that staff could take an initial stab at that, bring that back to the commission, and then if the commission feels that that's the route that we want to take, then we could vote in the form of an RFP. In conjunction with that, the commission, the staff could also look at, you know, how much money we're, we have within our budget to try to spend, or where we could raise some of this money, or how we could do that, and then make that recommendation to the commission. Also, ultimately, the commission would have that decision.
Would that come out of Commissioner Romero's road budget? No?
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I'll, sitting with my other hat on, I'll make discussion with our legal counsel and our technical group, and we'll go through the discussion with the governing body as well, to find if, if there could be some kind of discussion to kind of help with an RFP, or how the system can get set up, so that you're not having to create something, they might be able to have something that can help, have a template of some sort. So it might take, you know, maybe a month or something like that, I'm not sure that we'll be able to push too quick in the next meeting. But I think if you can give the village of Cuesta some time to kind of go through this, we do have a meeting tonight, I can probably bring that in my mayor's report to the governing body, see what they consider, and then inform you guys on the February meeting, what's going on.
Well, it would be nice to see an invitation from the village council and mayor to the county inviting us to be a part of this cleanup. I recognize that you guys have received some monies, and you're going to be receiving some funding already. But there's, there's other issues that I'm more concerned about, the environment and water, what it's, what it's going to do to the citizens a year from now, two years from now, 40, 50 years from now.
You're correct, Commissioner Romero. And I'll say that the village of Cuesta has not got paid, or it seemed like we got paid out on anything that's gone on. A lot of the monies that we've been receiving was basically an economic development fund that was created by Chevron in discussion with the village of Cuesta to diversify the closure of the mine. So that's some of the monies that people have seen that's been out in the Taos news. In addition, with the monies that we talked about, the 4 million was the impact that was on the river, the Red River, but also that in the historical process of putting water in sewer lines, back then, there was tailings found, bedded in our water sewer system infrastructure. So a good portion of that money is to dig those out, rebed them with material that is suitable for today's day, and that's where a lot of that money's going to be going. So, you know, we as a village wouldn't want to be bought out, because I think that those concerns for our community are what's most important, and I don't think there's a dollar amount that Chevron could throw at the village of Cuesta or the county, to say the least. But, you know, I feel that sitting at the table together gives an opportunity for everybody to have a more transparent and open discussion as to what's going to happen. I mean, like I said earlier, you know, you have issues that, that are, there's going to be some tailings capping. And it's, if it's three foot cover, if nobody has an issue with that, I think there'd be an issue if it was six inches, you know, I think there'd be a big, big issue. Where is that material going to come from? You know, it's going to come, it's not going to come from Colorado, it's going to come from within the county, and we got to be prepared for those kind of changes that are going to be out there in Sunshine or in Cerro, or wherever they decide to do that. In addition, with the, with the filling of the rock piles, the, the rock slide that's there, you know, you're going to have that material probably go back up in the open pit. What's, what's the effects, what's the look going to be along 38? And that's not village's property, you know, that's not within the village of Cuesta, that's county. And I think that's important, that the county has some opportunity to speak on how they'd like to see that be, you know, resurfaced, or how the landscape's going to look there, because it's going to be definite scar for the rest of our, our lives, you know. So we got to make sure that we try to tackle those things together.
So, Mr. Chairman, who, who is at the table at this point?
Under superfund law, it's, it's the environmental agencies of both the state and the federal government, and Chevron, and who else?
The Department of Minerals and Mining, or whatever the name of that is at the state level?
Right. Two state agencies and one federal agency.
No, no, the State Department of Energy and Minerals. Yeah.
NRD. Forest Services has a stake there at the table as well, but they're, you know, they're on a different idea of what they're doing.
And, and all of them are supposed to negotiate the final terms of the recorded decision, which was supposed to have addressed all of the issues, you know, that you've been talking about environmentally. And that's where the billion dollars get spent. It's a lot of rock removal, a lot of dirt removal, and right now Chevron is completing some of it even before the negotiations have been completed, because they've come to agreement on smaller aspects of it. But they did assure us at the last meeting that once they're completed with their negotiations, there will be time for public comment prior to presenting the negotiations to the judge. And that will be a critical time, no doubt, for Cuesta and Taos County to make sure that we understand what's being agreed to, and whether or not we agree to it.
And let's hope that 15 years from now, in future, commissions, they don't come wanting to donate gravel to the county for, for roads.
A truck.
Or a, a truck that's not even running.
So what's the pleasure of the commission at this point? We have a suggestion from Commissioner Gallegos.
It's not an action, oh, it is an action. Well, you know, I think we should do whatever we can. The fact that they continually turn their back on us and say that the closing of the mine doesn't affect Taos County is very irritating.
Is it? Sorry. Take action, or is this a?
We can. Consider it to pursue, so that maybe, Mr. Archuleta will continue to pursue that until we get an action item with an RFP in place for us to, to look over, and then go out for, for bid, I guess.
And I really like your suggestion to see with your other compatriots, whether or not there's a way that Cuesta and Taos County can work together to allocate our resources, and maybe come up with a joint RFP. I don't know what the possibilities are, but...
So maybe, Mr. Chair, maybe what I could do, what I would suggest then, for the commission to consider, is to continue to pursue the professional services by Mr. Archuleta in agreement with the village of Cuesta, so that they can work together and figure out what's the best practice will be for the county.
Is that the form of the motion?
No, no motion, just, you know.
Direction.
Direction at the time to move forward with what he's wanting to do, and just have that opportunity to sit with the village of Cuesta and move forward on that.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, and then when we have more information, we can bring it back as another agenda item. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Since it is a motion item, I would move that we do direct staff to pursue professional services regarding the Chevron Cuesta mine, and that it be in the form of a motion, because it is an action item, listed as an action item. So I so move.
Second.
Can you amend it to include the discussions with the village of Cuesta?
I so amend my motion that we pursue a cooperative agreement with the village of Cuesta to move forward, if that is all possible, that it be researched, that we partner with the village of Cuesta in any capacity, including financial.
Yes. Second or friendly for second?
Seconded and thirded. Is there any further discussion on this issue? If not, please call for the vote.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I'd also ask the permission of the commission to reach out to the Pueblo, just to see if there's any interest by them, if that's okay with the commission?
Please do.
Okay, we'll do. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would say not only Taos Pueblo, but a series of Pueblos that are along the Rio Grande and...
Northern.
Northern Pueblos. I mean, this is a serious issue, it affects their drinking water.
Their living water.
Their living water.
Thank you for the report.
We'll pursue that, thank you.
Thank you for the report, Steve. Onto 14, item A. This is under Commissioners' Report and Matters, and this is regarding a donation to the Old County Courthouse from the Taos Community Center Co-op Management Team and the Talpa Community Center Board of Directors. Commissioner Romero, is this yours, or?
It isn't, Steve would know.
Mr. Harmio.
Archuleta asked this matter to be placed on the agenda. I believe Talpa just wanted to inform the commission of the monies that they've brought in, so they wanted to see that they are giving back to Taos County, and regarding their sale of artifacts and artwork that's taking place at the Old County Courthouse.
It's generous and much appreciated.
I guess, Mr. Chair, this, my question then is, they're, they're providing some, some money back for, in lieu of using the community center, is that what it is?
Yes, sir. Yes.
I mean, that's kind of what's, what the role is to be played.
Mr. Chairman, in exchange for the space at the old courthouse, or is it the community center?
For the Old County Courthouse. It's the way I read the, the letters.
They have a space.
In exchange for space, they, we are collecting some rent.
From their sales.
From there. Right.
That's just part of the MOU that they have with, we have with them, right?
Actually, it's, this is being volunteered.
Oh, it's all volunteered?
That...
Oh, okay.
We, we do have a management agreement with them, but there's no lease, and so there's no rent payments. It's a management agreement that was entered into years ago, and we've had some opinions from administration that they, they might not actually, the agreement might not be sufficient for DFA, it probably isn't. But we've remained under it until we come to some decision about what we're going to do with the Old County Courthouse. And so, we certainly wish, wish them every success while they're there in, in their operation, and appreciate the donations.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner.
Mr. Harmio, does, do these figures represent 10%? Or is it 10% of those figures, and what is that total?
I'm not sure, Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell. I just read the letter last week in preparation, so I could work with Ms. Romero to understand the figures and get back, report back to the commission. Unfortunately, the only information I have is what was on the letter.
I believe it is, these are the totals that they'll give us. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Brent. Next item is a discussion regarding Taos County capital outlay request for Camino del Medio road project. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I would ask the commission to support this letter, and to sign off on it as quickly as possible, if approved. Because if it is approved, I do believe we will go to Santa Fe on Friday, and I'm hoping Commissioner Fambro and whoever else would like to go, we could meet down there, and present the governor with this letter and a packet of the Camino del Medio proposal, and with the hopes that we will receive additional funding from the governor's capital outlay package. So I would ask for approval to, and for you to sign off on this letter, if that could be done today, if it's approved, Mr. Archuleta, because we would want everyone's signature on it before we went down.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have a copy of the letter? Can we read?
It's on there.
Read the letter.
We can bring it up on the computer. Here, here's mine.
Oh.
The letter reads, "Dear Governor Martinez, it was a pleasure to meet with you at the receiving line after the swearing in ceremony. During our visit, we discussed that you wanted a capital outlay request relating to roads, bridges turned into your staff. On behalf of Taos County, I'm submitting to your office a capital outlay request of $625,000 for your consideration. The purpose of this request is to repave and widen Camino del Medio, a major north-south roadway that leads directly into the center of the town of Taos. Camino del Medio is a major arterial route within the town of Taos and functions as a bypass for local residents and visitors. The road is well-traveled and is in dismal condition. Both the town and county have identified this project as their number one ICIP priority. At last year's legislative session, both local governments received capital outlay funding, the county received $130,000, and the town received $180,000. These funds are currently pledged under, under a contract with Solder Miller to produce the necessary engineering, which will be, which should be completed by the fall of 2015. Taos County and the town of Taos have submitted for the 2015 legislative session, capital outlay request to both Senator Carlos Asneros and Representative Roberto Bobby Gonzalez. The requested amount for each local government to each legislator is $625,000. The estimated cost to complete the project is $4,144,041. Enclosed, please find a scouting report, which is in accordance and with the preferred method by the New Mexico Department of Transportation. The project can be done in phases, and we hope to begin construction soon after the engineering is completed. Your support of this project would, would be money well-spent and widely appreciated in our community. Thank you in advance for your kind consideration of our request. Sincerely, Candace O'Donnell, Taos County Commissioner, District 5, and it lists each of one of the commissioners."
It's a good letter, it's a really important project. Commissioner O'Donnell, appreciate your initiative on this, and we have a motion on the table. Further discussion? There being none, we'll call for the vote.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
And remember, I have an RTD meeting of one of the many committees that Commissioner Gallegos was not available to take, so it's all pending when I get out of that meeting before we go knocking on his aunt's door.
That's assuming you have time after the Arts and Artifacts Committee meeting.
And that also. But, you know, that's why there's 24 hours in every day.
Mr. Chairman, just to answer Commissioner O'Donnell's question, that letter is ready for signature, and the clerk has that, we will process that through. So we'll, we'll have that before you leave today, and the letter ready.
And, Mr. Chairman, I just have a few brief things I want to report. I promise I won't be long.
Oh, please, go, go right ahead.
You know, while, I missed the last commission meeting because I was at NMAC, and I took a number of classes, and one of them was open meetings and public inspection, and there were a few little things that opened my eyes, that, you know how some people say, oh, I have a phone for this, I have a phone for this, I have my personal phone, it doesn't really matter, it's all open for public inspection when you're a commissioner. In addition, I, I was told that any notes that we pass, or any conversations that we whispered to each other, is subject to the open meetings. So I've stopped taking, passing notes, and if I do pass notes, I'll have to give them to the county clerk to go in the record, which I thought was kind of an eye-opener for me. We did, there was a section on roads, and I thought this would be handy, that when we're vacating or adding a road, that we are legally can ask road viewers within a two-mile radius of the road to be road viewers. We've had problems in the past with getting our road viewer committees out to see the roads all over the county, and I... roads all over the county, and I thought this would be one way, and it's helpful that we can have those road viewers assigned, and they can live within a two-mile radius, so this might come in handy for us in the future. I thought it was funny, in relation to roads, that when the NMDOT surplus bidding is going on, a lot of counties send kids, they pick the equipment out, the kids put their running shoes on, and they run to the vehicle so they get first dibs, and I just had this image of my mind of kids running to these vehicles that each county wants to purchase, and if we ever do that, we might want to send someone who can run really fast. I have visited with constituents about roads, I just wanted to point out, I have one road, Royball Road, when it floods, just picture they had to move a foot of ice off this bridge because of the engineering of a culvert that runs right into Royball Road, and it's a real problem, it's going to take some negotiations to get that settled, but just the image of your mind, one foot thick ice on a bridge. I am partnering with UNM, I did a survey asking if there would be any interest in computer classes in Penasco, we've gotten back about 25 responses, and UNM is working to find a suitable location that has fiber optic hookup to begin those classes, they may be for free because of the poverty level in Penasco and the need to help people get computer skills. Also, finally, a couple more things, Town Hall meeting I'm doing with the sheriff in Penasco, at the Penasco Community Center, February 28th from 2:00 to 4:00. Also, I want to give a quick update on the Ag Bill 112, that's the bill I campaigned on, or campaigned on, how to protect land when there's a long-term drought, it's making its way, it's set to be heard tomorrow in the House Agriculture, Water, and Wildlife Committee. There are some problems with the bill for it to move forward, the county, the affiliates, assessors affiliates do not support the bill as it is, they want the horses taken out, and the one acre taken out, and if that's what we have to do to get that bill moving forward, so we can protect our agricultural lands in the event of long-term drought, then that may have to happen. And that's about it, other than the attorney, Dan Bryant, said every county should have a 40-year water plan, regardless of whether they have water rights, and this is to protect the interests of all involved and help manage how water is moved around in the county and out of the county, hopefully not ever out of the county, but I would really like to see the Water Advisory Board begin working on a 40-year plan, so we can be at the table, and we have some teeth in some of our policies, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just a quick question.
Steve.
What was that House bill, I'm sorry, I just needed the number.
1112.
112?
112, and it's going to be in Room 315 tomorrow at 8:00 a.m.
And does that extend the exemption period, past, like, it's currently a year, maybe? If there's a drought, is that the purpose of it, it extends that period? Do you guys know?
The bill's. Conditions for that.
NMAC board has agreed as of last Thursday to watch carefully, to see what happens with it and where it goes.
And that's the board that you sit on?
Yeah.
And is there still some discussion about horses and whatnot, as Commissioner O'Donnell?
There is, there is, and so, we're not supporting it officially at this time, but we're not also going against it, we're just, we've agreed to carefully watch it.
Is there any, anybody have any odds? Does it seem like there's good support, or not even?
It might be a miracle if this bill passes, but we're, again, some things are worth fighting for.
Representative Gonzalez is sponsoring it.
And Carlos is too.
So, it may have some potential. I wanted to say, Candace, I remember when your district was my commission district, when District 3 went into that area where Royball Road is, and in fact, Royball Road was never a road, it wasn't a royal, and so, little by little, people started using it to get to their homes, and it became a county road, and that's why you have that huge culvert in the middle of the road, but quite interesting how it's all evolved. Also, the computer lab, if you're in need of a computer lab, I don't know if at our county community centers, if we have access to be able to provide that need.
I don't think we have internet there, sufficient capacity.
Maybe it's something, Commissioners, that is worth looking at?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we are actually looking at that, we're wanting to bring in, if possible, the live wire into Taos County and also into county offices to include the Senior Citizens Center, and so there's some discussion that's actually being had at this point. We have an initial bid on that, and we will be bringing that in front of the commission at some point.
Great, thank you, Steve. Candace, thank you for the report and all your hard work. Thank you, Commissioner Romero, for your historical perspective. Is there any discussion?
I just have one thing, and on the next agenda, you'll see a, there's a lot of changes and a lot of cool things happening with the North Central RTD. I didn't do it on this one, because our meeting is actually this Friday, so I'm going to have a briefing on the 17th of some new changes to the service in Taos County that affect a lot of people, so I'll have all that stuff to you guys, hopefully ahead of time for the meeting.
Great, look forward to it, that's be good information. I guess we move on now to the last item, which is the Commissioners' Calendar for February.
That was part of that, but.
Oh, we already did it?
No, I didn't, I jumped.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the calendars are in front of you, if there's any changes to that calendar, please let me know, or anything that you'd like to have added to that calendar. I know we send out different calendars from different departments, Planning Department, the Roads Departments, but it gets too cumbersome if we do that, if there's anything else that we could add to this general calendar for you, we'd be more than happy to do that.
I got a call just right before we re-adjourned, that there's going to be another Columbine celebration at noon on February 14th at Taos Mesa Brewery, and I'm not sure who's coming, but there will be a flyer sent out by Rivers and Birds, Roberta Salazar and Steve, she said that she was going to get that to you, so maybe you can pass it on to the rest of the commission and the public in any way you can, and hope that that ends up being a good celebration.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner.
And I would just like to formally object to any agenda item for next week relating to the water rights transfer of El Prado, I don't think we have enough information, I don't like to be pressured into a decision, it's very similar to the Questa issue, it's very complicated, and I know Mr. Commissioner Gallegos wasn't here for that work study, and I would ask you to reconsider not putting that on the agenda at this time, thank you very much.
Two weeks, not one week?
Two weeks, yes, in two weeks. I strongly object to that going against our Water Advisory Board recommendations.
Well, this is a item that is going to have to be addressed because of the requirements of the hearing process before the state engineer, and I think that we are going to have to give our administrative staff and our legal department direction, because they would, if we remain in protest, then there are going to have to be expert witnesses, we have to decide what's the basis of the protest, and so, I know that currently the attorney for El Prado and our own attorney, Mr. Malone, have come to an agreement about a temporary stay of those requirements, but those requirements will not ultimately go away, and it's not an easy decision, I know that there's a lot of strong feelings about it, but we are going to have to address it. We just can't continue to put it off, because then the decision is made for us.
Mr. Chairman, I do respect your opinion, however, the Water Advisory Board made the opinion, the decision for us when they said we should protest this transfer.
No, no, that, I'm sorry, that's not the case, I mean, because the ordinance doesn't give them that authority, we can't really delegate that authority to a board, we have to make the decision ourselves, and so, Mr. Malone, you're going to need some direction on this, can you tell us when we need to make this decision?
In terms of the scheduling order that the court has entered, there's not going to be any room for any further rescheduling of it without it being very, very difficult, and this meeting in two weeks gives us just barely enough time, if we're going to have to, if we're going to continue to the protest, we're going to have to list witnesses and that sort of thing, and so, this is our last opportunity.
So, I'm going to ask that it goes on the agenda, every commissioner has the option of asking that items go on the agenda, and no commissioner has veto power over those rights of the other commissioners.
I understand, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
And something that you all said, so if we miss the deadline, then we've lost our right to continue or?
Well.
From 2010.
No, no, the deadline is not to, the deadlines that the chairman referred to are a scheduling order that the state engineer has entered that requires that in the litigation, certain things happen by certain dates. The first thing coming up is a listing of witnesses, which includes expert witnesses. We don't currently have funding to pay expert witnesses, and that's one of the things that the commission needs to decide.
Thank you. Do we have anything else? Nope, county clerk says it's time to adjourn. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Vice Chairman?
Yes.
Commissioner Gallegos?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.